Five thirty, we'll bring this meeting to order. Hello, Sandy. Hello, everybody. Today is April twenty six, twenty twenty three. Hey, you can hear me from the three microphones. It's five thirty. We have a planning commission meeting. We're gonna call a roll call. Start on Jacob Gray, District Three, North Fork area.
Kate Arlington, District Three, North Fork.
I'm Kate, District Three, North Fork.
Taylor, District Two, Service Creek.
Steve Frog, District One, Delta.
Todd Queen, District One, Delta.
Victoria Turner, District Two.
Artie Hutto, District Two, Service Creek.
Matt Clark, District One, Associate.
David Mary, District Three.
Amy Bronze, Cedar Edge, your associate.
Cindy Watson, District One.
Thank you. And we have, how are we looking on associate members? We have all our members from the North Fork. All our members from Cedar Edge and all our members from Delta. Okay. B, agenda items, additions, deletions, corrections. I have one change I'd like to change under our business. Under two bylaws, just for kind of ordering things, I'd like to change B to A, continue discussion, possible changes to the red line. So what we'll do is we'll continue where we left off rather than rehashing what we had changed two weeks ago. And then once we get through the end of the document, we'll go back to what we had changed up through six fourteen. Looking at it as an entire document, if we get there tonight, and we'll proceed from there. Are there any other changes to the agenda? Seeing none, the next item is meeting minutes. The meeting minutes from April twelfth, twenty twenty three. Did we look at those? Oh, just a shout out to staff. The minutes looked great. Thanks for capturing the robust discussion we had. Sure is a bit challenging to get all that in in detail. So thanks to that. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
So move.
Motion, we have a second.
My second.
Motion by TK, second by Cindy. Any discussion around this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item D, planning commission business. With the bylaws of the planning commission recommended, continued from April twelfth. As you can tell, Carl is not here. He's away. There will be also a report. Kay will be giving the staff report after our deliberation. They'll talk about some, the email that some of us received regarding Carl's tenure. That being said, I think we as a board, I think we can, we can handle this. We'll, we'll have Kim kind of scroll on through. If we have any questions for Carl, you know, we can hold him, but I think these are our bylaws. We can take a stab at him. If we like something, we give, you know, keep it. If we don't, we get rid of it. We're gonna start on six fourteen, meeting procedures, which is where we kind of got hung up last meeting. I say we take this at the first, we'll go paragraph by paragraph. We'll kind of open it up. Do we have any discussion around the first paragraph? Regarding Robert's rules, guidance, or otherwise addressed by these bylaws. Recognition by the chair. And members of the commission should direct all inquiries regarding legal matters to the county attorney. Do we have any amendments to this, Victoria?
Chairman, um, did everyone get the Roberts rule simplified email?
I did receive that.
Just following up from last meeting where we had talked about having a specific set documentation of what we're going to be following as per like parliamentary procedure. I'd like to suggest that maybe we follow those two pages.
I think if we use that too, Victoria, we need to credit who actually came up with that short version, the corner of university. So I noticed you sent it out, but I do know in having a background in in teaching that if we don't announce that and we use something like that, it leaves us open. So I think we need to.
I didn't hear it.
What are you trying to say now?
It was an email that was just.
Four P M.
Forwarded about four P M this afternoon.
I didn't get it.
It's a, it's a shortened version of Robert's rules, you know, talking about how to, how to take a motion, a break, how to ask for questions. I don't think we would necessarily put this document in our bylaws.
Four P M today.
Four P M today.
Yeah, I had to check that next meeting.
Okay. Um, I had a potential suggestion for this, that perhaps if we'd like to, as a commission, we take reference to Robert's rules or any parliamentary procedure out of our bylaws. And we have a document similar to this as a, a supporting document that we could actually have as almost like a fact sheet and a reference sheet at the table for planning commissioners to use. It'll, you know, kind of work as a
Guidelines, are what you're saying.
A guideline. It'll be good for orientation for new commissioners as well. Here's the bylaws. Here's how we, you know, here's how to use Robert's rules.
So what are you suggesting, man?
That we would take out. Take this, the Roberts rules out of the bylaws.
Any reference to it? You, should we maybe just sort of state parliamentary procedures, which is pretty broad? And then address, I mean, I'm, I'm, I sort of agree with you. I think we can take out Robert's rules order and use it as an adjunct, but didn't just say the chairman can use parliamentary procedures that way. We're not so boxed in. We're not, it came up as a suggestion after our last meeting. Because we were struggling.
Yeah.
Of trying to get it so narrow. Whereas the suggestion was, don't get, don't paint yourself into a box. You can't get out of it. So if you just use parliamentary procedures at your discretion, it can be, it can be Robert's rules order. It may not be.
Who, who would announce it or who would decide at what point in the meeting that we're using one?
Yeah.
At this point, it's the chairman. That's what, this is saying, meeting procedures shall be determined by the chair. Who they use and we're saying removes the reference to Robert rules order to say may use parliamentary procedures or not for guidance where otherwise addressed in these bylaws.
Victoria.
Yeah, um, so I just still have an issue with the broadness of that. Like, I would like something very concrete and specific. I don't think that it's boxing us in. I think it's just giving us a set of guidelines such as the bylaws that we're supposed to follow. And if there's any questions, we can all refer to the same documentation and keeps it fair as well, that we're not using different parliamentary procedures each meeting. We can all be well versed on one set of laws or, or rules. Instead of trying to keep up with every parliamentary procedure that the chairman could decide to use. It just keeps it, it fair and, and consistent.
You would like to keep this language as is?
No, no, I'm, I'm not opposed to removing this specific Roberts rules of order, but I think, like you said, having a reference to a set of parliamentary procedures that we can all decide on and draft and whatever else using a parliamentary procedure. Just something concrete that we can all look at instead of just like, this meeting, we're gonna use it and this meeting, we're not going to.
The discretion, excuse me.
Mr. Chair, why don't we define what it is we need to do with parliamentary procedures? I think it's pretty basic. We take motions, we second motions, and we vote. Is there anything else that we need to do? I, I have a question about not knowing something. I think I could use plain English. And ask the chair, Mr. Chair, could you explain this to me rather than point of information or point of fact or matter? It's like getting boxed in, it's like you say, we're, we all speak English here. And there's basically those, those three things that we need to have some formalities on. If you want to present something to the, to the commission, make a motion, second the motion, take a vote.
And that's how it's been.
Or have, or open it up for debate.
That's how it's been for, since prior to the master plan, prior to land use code. We've operated with many chairs and many planning directors without a you know, just operated on common sense language, common sense decorum, without boxing ourselves in. And that's been a, a great way to, to have deliberations about these subdivisions and menus, things that have come up. So I think that's a pretty good idea.
So if we do that, I keep, I think we have to keep this legally in line for record keeping, for legal proceedings of this meeting. And we all abide by that, so.
So Matt, how, how would you write?
I'm just, I just put it in, the parliamentary rules are these. Making a motion, accepting a motion. Voting, discussion.
David.
I, I agree that I think we should pull Robert's rules order out of there for sure. In my experience, there's a lot of versions of Robert's rules order. When I've tried to be in a meeting and people are pulling up different versions, it doesn't really help. I, I like what he said here. But if you look on ahead, like motion, in the bylaws further down, you've got motion making, amending a motion, discussing, it's sort of laid out there already. So I don't know that we need the simplified, the simplified aren't bad. It's two pages, but you'd have to compare simplified rules if you're gonna adopt something like that to what's already in there. So, um, I, I could see going either way, but I don't know that the simplified rules are necessary in light of what's already in here in terms of six point one three motion making, form of motion, amending motion discussion. It's kind of laid out there pretty well already.
I suggest that we put a period after chair in that sentence. So when we read, meeting procedures shall be determined by the chair, period. Strike who may use Robert's rules or guidance or not otherwise addressed in these bylaws. Strike the rest of that sentence and then keep the rest.
Yeah.
Okay, is that a motion?
Do we need to make much, right?
I guess not.
We just need consensus that we.
Is that okay? Do we sit well with that?
I think Steve's suggestion is great. Keep it simple.
Okay.
Well, and simple can keep it flexible too, Dave. I think that's what's important when we have applicants that come up, that, not that we're being inconsistent. There's a big difference between the word inconsistent and flexibility. And I think that's.
That's the part that I'm having an issue with though, is like the flexibility that we can afford for one, one applicant and not for another, if we don't have a specific set rules. Also, just like, whatever we do have in the bylaws, like what we're doing right now, like all just, or all commissioners must be addressed by the chair or call them at chair. I think that including things like those and then actually following them makes it a lot easier for the staff to take meeting minutes, makes it easier for people online to know we're speaking. If we are to just create our own set of parliamentary procedure rules, I think that we can do that and should do that, but also that we should include a lot of specifics, not just broad. Like, like I was saying, this, this two page one, even if we don't use this exact document, if we pull stuff from it. The reason for parliamentary procedure is so that the minority still gets a chance to speak, even if the majority disagrees. And so that's why you're able to interrupt if you have a question. And in parliamentary procedure, you have to get an answer, things like that. May be considered disruptive to people that don't wanna deal with that, but if I have a question and I can't continue in the meeting without having an answer, that's why we have parliamentary procedure, because it states that I have the right to have an answer. So I can make a just decision. So I just think that even if we create our own, that, that there are a lot of things that existing parliamentary procedure has to offer us to keep it consistent, to make it so that even objections, you know, like if the chairman has the power to make a decision and one of us objects, that's our right to do that. And to say, hey, I don't agree with that. Um, but if that's not in our parliamentary procedure, we're not gonna be able to do that. So.
I don't see anything in here that doesn't say you can't object. And, and speaking to your, you know, minority talking, we still do have points, we have point of order, point of information and point of clarification two paragraphs down, uh, which does address some of the, your concerns in the simplified version as well. So is there anything else in your version that you're not seeing? We have motion making, we have points of order, information and clarification. We have the right to vote. What else is in the simplified document that you'd like to see specifically?
It really just goes over the things I'm talking about. Like, everyone has the right to participate and speak. Everyone has the right to know what is going on. Everyone has the right to broom on important matters. Only one motion can be on the table at a time. Like I said, if we just, okay, I can't pull it both at the same time, so maybe we could just.
Well, no, Victoria, I think we have all those things because by just saying you have to be recognized by the chair, that means we have one person speaking. We can only have one motion at a time. Like I said, I think we distribute this document separately. But I, I, I say we move on, at least from this first paragraph.
I think that there's, there's gonna be some point where we can make this incredibly lengthy and, and very detailed and every, to, to Matt's point of, you know, using specific phrases and certain things that I just, I don't feel is necessary. I think at some point, these meetings are gonna be conducted with a matter of decency. And if there's somebody in here that has an objection, I don't think there's anybody in here that's not gonna allow them to make that objection. And I don't, I don't know that we have to spell out every single little facet of what could possibly arise in the next ten years of this planning commission. Cause it's, we'll never, we'll never finish this process.
So I just, I just have one little piece, cause I came in kind of as a, as a person that didn't have as much experience as everybody else when I first came on as an associate. And I think what was great about being associated is I got a chance to listen, participate, vote when my representative was, was not here and that gave me some voting and some input. But I have to tell you, I felt that when TK was the chair at the time, going around, he always took time with anyone and everyone that had questions or maybe an objective. We needed more information for clarity, whether it was, you know, Carl home. So to answer your question, Victoria, I, I think the longer you're here, I think that you're gonna see that that is exactly how the meetings go. Nobody yells at anybody else. No, some people have a, a, and, and, you know, they come up with something that maybe is different than what you or I think is perfect. But you know what? We sit down and we say, hey, that's a really good idea, but maybe we could tweak it just a little bit this way, or maybe we could do this and and we're always here to help the applicants and we're here to preserve ag and we're here to represent very professionally. And I think that to me is very important at a meeting, is to have very professional representation, not only to each other, but also to the applicants that walks through that door.
And there, and I don't think there's anything that stamps this in concrete. Where we, we finalize this and then something comes up that we feel as a commission needs to be addressed, that we don't amend and add to the bylaws. I mean, it's not. I, I just think if, if we look at it like, okay, this is stamped in concrete, we have to think of every possible situation and, and and have it right now. I just, I really think we're gonna have a lot of meetings discussing this.
Well, my, my thing is that as a new member, um, I was given no training, no bylaws, no parliamentary procedure. And so when you read the bylaws and these are, this is your governing document, to have as much information to get you started and understand as a new member is super important. So even though it works that way and it takes, you know, I guess experience sitting in a chair here for a year, whatever, to see how things are working. You have nothing to compare how things are working to actual documentation of how they should be working. So it's all just up in the air.
So I think you're looking for a level of rigidity that's never, structural rigidity that's never existed. It's my time here. And the planning commission has passed judgment on hundreds of issues. And we've all ways done a good job doing it. And without a certain level of rigid, you know, rigidness. We were all new members at one point. When I was a new member, I didn't, no one spoke to me for the first couple of meetings. I just sat there and was quiet, you know? There was no orientation. I picked up a planning book to, to learn about the purpose of planning. And I, I learned, I listened and learned, and that's how you do it. So you should, you know, take the time to educate yourself on, on the purpose of planning and we all should do that. And you know, I think you would find in these meetings that we have a good dialogue and we find some majority consensus. It's not always unanimous and then we move forward. So what?
I went, what, Artie, for the first time, just trying to recognize folks who haven't spoken yet.
Well, the last couple of months, I've heard a loud cry from the taxpayers about regulation and all this getup. And I think what Matt's saying here, I think we ought to bring that right into here and make it simple. I don't think we need all these regulations that everybody's been talking about. So I, I think we can do what we've been doing, a nice, simple deal, just like what Matt's saying. And I think that's the way we roll.
So one thing, and, and I'm certainly not trying to spilt words in your mouth, but I was also a new member here pretty recently. And I would propose adding something to the bylaws that there is some type of orientation for new members. I, I called Carl, I was like, Carl, I, I need to get some type of wrapping my head around this thing, cause it's, you know, I've, I've never had much of a reason to pay a lot of attention to land use code. I'm, I'm not doing commercial developments. I'm just trying to live my life and do my thing. And so I, I do think it would be really helpful to, and it can be simple, and it can be a one day thing for a couple hours where maybe Carl or the staff meets with new, newly appointed members of the planning commission and just put together some type of repo view. I know, uh, staff sent out some videos that were on YouTube that were really helpful, like there can be some pretty simple, uh, tools that are provided before our first meeting where we yeah, you're still not, I mean, you can't replace the experience you're gonna get in being in meetings. And I get that. But at least allows you to come in and be like, okay, I have at least ground zero to work with. And now we can build up from here. And I, I do think that would be a good idea.
Yeah. Okay, or, sorry, TK?
So after one of your first meeting, I did make a request, because there is an online DOL presentation that I, I did ask staff to make sure that any of the members get a chance. I don't, I don't follow up to see that you do it. We used to do it every year for everybody. So I probably objected that it was, I didn't want to see it again. But it is, it can be useful and I think the suggestions that everybody else has had, have been spot on that you know, there's a lot to learn sitting in the chair and take the time to learn. And with that, I think we should move on. I'm gonna suggest that we take Steve's suggestion about period and change, we move on.
Great. One paragraph down. Uh, let's go to the blue highlight. This was one that Carl had made a question. Do we, uh, do we keep unless see, commission members should not invite solicit members to the public to express approval, disapproval in any form. In addition, commission members shall not engage or enter in the conversation. I actually drew up specific language and let's see if you guys like it. I'd like to strike the first sentence. I don't don't love that. And then for the second sentence, commission members shall not engage or enter into, enter into conversation with or towards the public during commission meetings. Individuals may be called up to the table for further discussion through the chair or majority approval. So if we do wanna have a conversation with folks, you know, we're not just gonna have it to the side. If you wanna have a conversation, let's bring it up. Bring them up here to the center and we'll grill them if we wanna grill them.
The only issue with that first sentence is it contributes some bias clause in here. You're inviting members for a certain reason, then you, you could be approaching a, an application with bias.
Well, you're also applying the experte. I mean, you start having conversations on, with people in the public. I, I just think we need to be professional. I think when public time is public time, it should be public time. When it's our time to speak as a commission, I mean, I just think that it should run that smooth.
I mean, specifically, it, it, you know, we should not invite solicit members to express approval or disapproval, because we've already prejudged.
Have, has anyone invited or solicited members to do that in the past?
No, I think it's, it's like one of those, it goes without saying, doesn't it?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, when members of the audience have specific information on a topic, be it the applicant or a neighbor, and turning to them and saying, what do you think about?
No, but the verbal clapping, etc. You haven't, you haven't asked people to say, hey, everybody cheer, three cheers.
Cheer if you like this idea.
Which is what I'm saying, you know, this feels like disrespect towards both us as planning commission members and our public that this could be an issue. And if it hasn't been an issue, I don't see why we need to leave it in.
So do you have your version of this that you've, has, have a slide on or is it?
I don't.
Okay, so just go through it one more time.
I drew that up again.
I guess I was looking at the word invite as something that happens before a meeting, right? You shouldn't invite people prior to a meeting
Oh.
to express approval. That's bias.
So it seems like this, yeah, at, at the very least, this first sentence is confusing. Its intent is confusing.
So the, the recommendation was pull it out.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm all for that. Yeah.
I'll read through it again. Strike the first sentence. Begin, commission members shall not engage or enter in the conversation with or towards the public during commission meetings. Individuals may be called up to the table for further discussion through the chair or majority approval.
I like that. Yeah, I like that.
Okay.
And I'm just gonna go on record saying I don't think we should move that sentence, because we shouldn't be inviting people prior to a meeting.
Like, what, do you think that is covered under the experte and bias clause? Or like, should we move to?
It contradicts it. And maybe it doesn't mean we said, and I'm fine with taking it out. I just wanted to be solicit.
So you think that that needs to be specified, that we should not invite somebody here with a specific bias towards what, something we're seeing?
We absolutely should not.
Right, but you think that needs to be spelled out?
Um.
Cause then, I don't, we can open up a whole.
I don't think it should necessarily be spelled out, but I, but I.
So what I think of it, you know, if you're thinking of it as a pre, pre invitation to the meeting or something, I can also see a, a situation where a member of the public approaches one of us and says, oh, what do you think about Bola or I'm concerned about Lola? And we absolutely should invite them and say, hey, you should come to the meeting and express your opinion. Not that we're taking their opinion as we're talking to them, but we should be actually inviting people to come to the meeting and and, and not express anything in our, that, that goes along with our specific feelings about it.
With that being said, I agree.
Yeah.
And that word invite is kind of like, potential. You know, and potential to one is not, you know, you have to be careful. It's a word that is, is kind of just changing a little bit.
And it does say for another document, judgment bias.
Yeah.
So I like, I like your version, Jake, if I think that.
Any?
Let me see. All the changes that have been recommended and we'll get into a final document, including what he's saying or whatever we do to be reviewed one more time. We're not like approving.
Anything tonight. That's correct.
So you know.
Got it. Thank you.
Second sentence.
Second.
Yeah. Clear the comment box. Just this period. Unless allowed through the chair. I like that better than not having that included in the language.
No, I'd add that to the
We don't see his.
Individuals may be called up to the table for further discussion through the chair or majority approval. I apologize, that's not in writing on the board.
So that'll get added.
So I tried to, I tried to bring in Carl's comments and, and not just through me. So I tried to, I tried to bring in Carl's comments and, and not just through me, but if. If the majority of folks wanna hear from a person, we should be able to vote on and say, let's bring up so and so.
And I think we're done talking.
Okay, third paragraph, discussing points, points of order, points of information, points of clarification. Uh, do we want it to be spelled out like this? Do we like how this is worded? Can we zoom out and get all of it in there?
What this does imply is that there's a formality. However, to asking that question, at the Matt's comments. I hope that if somebody's confused, but they have a question. Not having to say point of order, for example. So we can just say, hey, what about this?
The only caveat that would be if it triggers uh, something for the secretary to keep track of. I hear the word point of order, uh, that's something I gotta record through the name here.
But it's all being recorded anyway. So is the suggestion, take the whole paragraph out? Why do we need it?
Why do we need?
I like it. Um, I think that. Again, just having something to look at that we can all understand what it means, something that has a definition behind it. And that way it, it clearly points out that in our parliamentary procedure, it is appropriate to say, hey. I have a question. If ever, if this paragraph is gone, we have nothing in there about. Asking a question, getting an answer, et cetera.
I don't think we need to write it down to do that though. Just like, right now. If we go off of what you were talking, nobody's getting called out by the chair, nobody's talking, having dialogue, but we're moving forward. We only have so much time to donate and I use that word donate to get stuff done around here. If we're gonna, you know, go down that road, it's gonna. We're gonna have to have seven meetings a month and so too. And I, I just don't like it, so.
I mean, historically, I've been doing this now for what, two, three years, I don't know, maybe more. I've never felt that anybody's left a meeting who didn't have a chance to speak.
Neither.
I don't want you to ever feel like you're gonna get cut off. I mean, I'm on the chair, but the answer is I, I've just never seen, I mean, down to a number of different chairs, they've all managed it differently. I think that's the beauty of having a chair. We want to take, have, take on the compatibility or, or, or the. Sense of how they wanna run it and, and I think it's always been fair, it's always been respectful. And everybody's had a chance. We don't, that doesn't mean we don't agree. And we've had some pretty tense moments. That the chairs had to step in and say, let's take a break here or settle down. But I think those are all part of what we are. And I, I don't think we need to formalize, this feels like. Formalizing Robert's rules or orders to me again. I think we're just trying to get away from it, so I, I'm gonna. You know, I think, the other thing I think we have to have here is some consensus. I, I want you to make sure you speak your mind and if there are people who agree with you, they should speak up. Um, if we're not, we wanna get the consensus of how, how we feel and move on. Go ahead, Lane, I'm sorry.
I uh, I transitioned from the APCs to the planning commission.
You've been here a long time.
Been here a long time. And we've never had a really strict regiment of roles. And, and all the hearings have operated smoothly. Uh, I can't ever recall a meeting where somebody wasn't allowed to speak their opinion. And uh, by putting so much regulations in, it might hurt each other. We would have to start having seven meetings a month instead of two, because all they do is extend and go away things.
I'll recommend we delete that paragraph. Oops, sorry, Kate.
I'm just, I'm wondering if there's a way that we can't, you know, cause really if we're talking about deleting this paragraph, we're basically talking about deleting the next several. You know, deleting this whole section that deals with specific. Procedure. I mean, this is about, you know, points of information, points of order. The next is about motion making and amending motions and discussion. Basically, this is outlining a, a basic, you know, a simplified Robert's rules or parliamentary procedure. I'm wondering if there's a way we can kind of. Shorten this to, yeah, say something like we follow parliamentary procedure. These are the procedures we specifically. Recognize, you know, want to like specifically say we recognize. You know. But yeah, shorten, you know, the each thing and I, what I hear Victoria saying is. You know, one, as a new member, you wanna figure out how this thing works and I, and I do agree with that. And I don't think the answer of like, it's always worked this way, so we should not ever worry about it is necessarily the way to create bylaws. Um, but at the same time, I think we can all recognize that. This is a Delta Planning County, you know, Delta County Planning Commission. We're not. At the state legislature right now and we can simplify some of the ways we work. Um. I guess what I'd like to see, I think, which is kinda what they. Stated in the first place was, can we make reference to a document that is publicly available and available to all new members? That states our basic procedures without outlining, you know, every, every way you can make a motion in a bylaw. I guess I've not read a lot of bylaws, but it seems. A little unusual to. To write it out like this. But anyways, going back, what I hear from Victoria is a way to ensure that, you know, by our bylaws, each member has the right to speak. Has the right to find information, you know, find out more information if they need it. You know, and we take one motion at a time, the chair recognizes speakers, you know, kinda state those things, those five things maybe in like a. A little more simplified version. But I don't have language on that right now.
There's an alternative that we can have an appendix to the bylaws and we point to this simplified document. Once we all get eyes on it and if we wanna, you know, folks are really, really excited about uh, parliamentary procedure. We could have a committee on it and folks that really wanna hash it out, come present it to the whole PC. Either that or we do it all or we're gonna keep doing this.
Like writing the bylaws again. Yeah, and I think leaving the information in here as far as motion making and such in the bylaws is, is fine. And that's a legal requirement that we have to. Go through to advance, you know, an application. Uh, and so leaving that stuff in here is fine. I agree with, with Lane and whatnot that the rest of this is. And, and TK pointed out, I mean, everybody gets a chance to speak often too much. So I, I think to that point, if it is a legal requirement, that there are certain ways that things are done. Do we have to be repetitive and spell all those things out? We don't have a choice. Whether our bylaws state those things or not, we have to follow those, those rules.
And is that so? Is, do we have reference to? State statute or county rules that, that say this is the, what we have to follow, you know, in terms of pr- motion procedure?
I didn't find anything in the state statutes that's referenced Robert's rules having to be used. We come up with the rules we want to run ourselves by. This part I don't think needs to be in there. That comes in our discussion phase of information. Uh, Chair directs that, we maintain a degree of professional decorum. And we can move along. For the official motion making, leave that part in there. That's what we do to bring a motion to the.
Okay, other Kate.
Um, so the Colorado Department of Local Affairs, which is DOLA, which they did the training back in October. Um, twenty-one, um, they do have a website that is titled Planning Commissioner Resources and it does have links for, you know. Certain things and it does have a link for parliamentary procedure and helpful tips. So there are things that you guys can certainly look at through the DOLA website for guidance.
So I'm not adverse to it. I'm sorry.
I would love to do that. Um, I'd make a motion that we postpone this section of the bylaws. And we look into the DOLA if we can get that link sent. Um, and we look at the parliamentary procedure that's already provided for planning commissions. Um, and make some decisions on that and edits if we feel necessary. Even if it is a separate document that we just referenced you. That'd be extremely helpful um, and cover all of our bases.
So what are you asking for, Victoria?
A motion to postpone this and to have a link to the DOLA sent out so that we can all uh, review the parliamentary procedure. That they recommend for.
Talking about just section six of the whole bylaws?
Oh, no, just the um, sections pertaining to motion making, parliamentary procedure.
There's a motion. Is there a second for that? We wanna get through it.
Yeah, I'm also looking, I'm looking at that link right now and I don't know that it's gonna clarify a lot. It's. It is essentially. The simplified rules that you sent and it is essentially what we have in our bylaws, you know, in the red line version. And I guess, and what seems like what we're debating is whether we keep it in the bylaws or we put it in a separate document.
I think Matt said it right. Take this stuff out and leave the motion making in there and we should move this thing forward. This is a long time to spend on bylaws.
You got a motion lacking in second.
Yes.
Can we just miss with that?
Yes, yes, yes. Yeah, do, I'm hearing that we wanna take this out. Is there?
Yeah, but how do we do that without like maybe taking a vote or something? Kind of we're like bouncing all over. Some people are thinking one thing, Mark, let's take a vote.
All for a vote. Who wants to take this out? Great, we're taking it out. This whole from certain situations all the way down to out of order by the chair.
Yeah, just that paragraph in there. And if there's an interest in an appendix, which I'm not sure, I'm, I, I think I agree with.
Yeah.
Someone just should put it together, including, you know, what, what Victoria's brought, brought forth is simplified. And we can refer to the appendix at a later, at, at any point in this and it includes some of these things. This thing containing that with the body of the bylaws. Where we wanna go and, but it doesn't preclude it from ever being an appendix. So even if Kate, if you wanna take that up and put that together. Do that. We could look at that. We'll, we'll look at it again.
Or uh, the PowerPoint presentation for new members or refreshing the memory of the. Commission members that has all these little items listed.
You know, we've got the three paragraphs so far.
Yep, we're, we're doing good. Great. Six fifteen, motion making. Uh, there's some stricken language in here. But. Some of it moved to six seventeen, which is in discussion. Um, and then also amendments moved, right? Yeah, amendments moved. Okay, so all the stricken languages moved down into their own subsections. Do we have any heartburn about those being moved into different sections or can we move on?
So I have one suggestion and I know it's come up in some of the things that Victoria brought up as well. Historically, I've seen when we make a motion, somebody seconds it right away and then all, then we're trying to get into amending it. And then we finally get into amending it. We're never really clear what the motion was. I, I really, from my perspective, I, I really feel like. We shouldn't second it until we know what we're, what we're gonna do. And so a motion is great. And, and then whatever we need to add to it, instead of making amendments, let's get the motion right. And then when we sort of can see that's right, somebody makes a second and then we vote on that motion. I, I'm proposing that we take out the ability to amend those things because it goes back to. A friendly amendment, an unfriendly amendment, who's, you know, who's doing the second, I don't know. I was always so confused by that. What Carl always understood it. But I never understood it. I never knew where we were when people started speaking after a second. So go ahead, Lane, I'm sorry.
When you, when you put in there, in, in making a motion. Put the language in there, make. A motion has been made and now we'll have discussion on it and then look at a second. And instead of just having somebody just pop up and say automatically, I second that. If, if we, you know, uh, put that in, after making the motion, then it's gonna be discussed before we second it. Does that make sense?
Yeah, can the second be a process that's a request of the chair second, second, it's not just coming out?
Yeah, I just, I think if there's a motion and there's no second, then you don't need to discuss it. So I do think you have a motion second and discuss.
And I think.
I'm only really addressing.
Yeah, that's, well, that's.
That, uh, uh, I, I do, we do need a second.
Right.
I'm, maybe it wasn't clear, but I just, when we do the amendments after a second. I'm always confused because you have to go back to the rigid motion maker. You gotta go back to the person who seconded it. And I never know what, what we're doing. So I'm saying, if we, if we make a motion. We don't, if the discussion doesn't happen about the motion, but the amendments regarding that motion happen at that time.
Yes.
And once the amendments, if we have any, are attached to the motion before a second, then we get a second and then we have a discussion.
I feel like then we just have two discussion periods for every motion that's made.
I think one thing, one thing that will help.
Discussion after a motion is made.
What we need, I mean.
One thing that'll help for clarity's sake, and I have a note of this, is that it is the duty, is my duty to repeat motions, which I haven't been doing a great job at. So I'm gonna try to get in the practice of that. I think that will help some of this. Yeah, once we are done amending and seconding and discussing that we need to. We need to say it out loud. We need to look at it on paper, whatever it is. So that'll help with clarity going forward. We're still on motion making. Six point one five. We're not even to amendments yet. Are there any changes to six point one five motion making?
So you make the motion and then you're recognized by the chair? Is that, or? You have to be recognized by the chair before. That kinda like touches on what Victoria's saying here though. I mean, I feel like. Maybe you should be able to make a motion. And then be recognized by the chair, but.
Do we wanna?
Chairs is like looking over here. I mean, it's not gonna happen, but. We want everybody to be able to speak and do, you know.
Do you wanna strike after being recognized by chair?
Yeah, and I think anybody should be able to make a motion.
Yeah, I, I think so too.
Even if the chair's sleeping or whatever.
Victoria.
What about if someone's in the middle of giving a statement and someone cuts them off to give them a motion because you don't have to be recognized?
That comes down to professional decorum.
Yeah.
You don't jump in on that.
I'm not gonna do that.
There's been a lot of overspeaking already in this meeting.
That's how we get stuff done.
Respectfully, but just in general, so.
So it's kinda unclear to me like what being recognized by the chair means.
Right.
You know, and a lot of these, it's like, wait, so I just have to stand, sit here with my hand up until I'm recognized? Or is it a way for?
It's general, I mean, I'm not gonna, yeah, I'm trying to like do my diligence. I'm trying to take notes and, you know, be respectful. Honestly, our bylaws could just say be respectful and we'd be fine, but we need more than that, so.
So we're good with any member of the commission may make a motion here?
You want, yeah, Victoria, you wanna keep it? Does anyone else wanna keep after being recognized by the chair?
So that includes alternate uh, associate members.
Associate members.
If, if they.
Not allowed to vote, can they make a motion?
Only if they've been recognized because of the vacancy.
So I think we can't go this half, that we're halfway there. Like right now, the way it should be is everybody that speaks should be recognized by the chair and then speak. We haven't done that any today and we haven't done it since I've been on this board. So I think the professional, you know, we can do this and move along because these things take long enough. Without everybody and then writing down fifty-four notes, because it doesn't work that good, you know. Fifteen minutes after something was said, it's kind of under the bridge and you come back and rehash all this stuff. It just starts it over and over and over again. So I think that you should be able to talk, um, make a motion without. And then kinda go from there. I, I think we can get through it and move this stuff along without having to be recognized. If anybody gets out of line, you'll slam that hammer down and be like, but.
Sure will. Uh, let's strike after being recognized by the chair. Cause sometimes a motion is a great way to move things forward, like you said, Arby. Sometimes we can discuss a lot.
Mr. Chair, are we still leaving though that associate members are not able to make a motion? We're leaving that section still incorrect.
Yeah, could we scroll down just to?
Maybe you could phrase it differently and say voting members of the commission may make a motion. Cause at the beginning of the meeting, you establish who are the voting members.
That's a good matter. That's a good matter. Some of these were associate may not.
Yeah, they might be voting members.
So voting members were associated, is that what you're thinking, Matt?
Any voting member of the commission, maybe?
Any voting member. I don't know if you want to get real technical.
No, that's, that's good. It's good.
So after. Associate member may not make her second a motion unless the chair acknowledges the very status reading C-section by the law. I would say after the motion and take out and second, but.
Can we pull that out somewhere?
Well. That's where I was going before. So after the motion, the chair shall restate the motion, including approved amendments, and request discussion from the members of the commission after a second. I'm just thinking the order, so we can get our motions proper.
There are amendments here before the second.
If people feel we're gonna be discussing things twice, that's not my intent.
That, that line there could be taken out. Associate members may not, you can take that whole thing out because you've established that already.
About voting members.
You're absolutely right.
We're striking that. Um, so TK, you're talking about the sentence after that.
Well, just, we're setting again. My intent is to try to simplify the way we make motions and approve them and vote on them. The confusions always come when we make a motion and automatically second it, and then people start adding amendments, we get a little lost.
So we should put including any approved amendments, pop out second, and make sure second comes behind that.
Yeah.
After the motion is what you're thinking.
Go ahead.
I think there was a good point that was made earlier. There are going to be times where there are going to be motions made. That will not receive a second. So we're gonna spend a bunch of time deliberating, amending a motion that may or may not ever be seconded. Which is, which is worse, sorry?
Not necessarily. Uh, it would be after the motion, chair restates motion, do I have a second? Are there any amendments or do I have a second? I see what you're saying, uh, but. I see TK's point, he would just restate the motion and ask for a second. I guess he'd have to ask for amendments. Versus a second, I don't know if it's.
We're kind of getting bogged down in it, Victoria?
I think that, um. All of this discussion could be avoided if we just use some kind of. Different document with simplified parliamentary procedure. Um, we see now that it's taking us just as much time as it would to postpone and put something together.
Oh, then we're gonna have to put that together, is what Steve's saying, yeah. So we do it now, we do it later. Um, is there, I don't hear a ton of consensus, I think we're kind of split on this.
So leave it like it is, I'm, I'm just throwing an idea.
I don't think there should be discussion before.
A second.
A second.
Okay, so.
That's parliamentary procedure, yeah.
So the second initiates the option to discuss, and then the votes come after.
That's correct.
Yes.
And amendments would come after the second.
Amendments.
Yeah, okay.
But as long as Jacob, you're gonna then be able to rehearse all the, that would really help. I think that's, I'm agreeing with you TK, is that when you start doing that, you're like, okay, so where do we kind of start? And what did we kind of add, and you know, but if you can reiterate that, that would really help.
Yeah, we'll, we'll try, try our best.
Just trying to help us be better at making motions.
Right.
We failed a little bit, but I'll do it like it is. I'll try.
Okay, uh, what was six fourteen is now just part of six, what is now six fifteen? Um, these are just, you know, talking about our recommendations, approval, approval with conditions to have for board. I don't see major changes here, are we okay to move on? Okay.
Are we still on six fifteen?
Yeah, we're at the last paragraph.
The last sentence, are we there yet?
Uh, which sentence, motions? We are there right now.
I would add in that motions regarding land use applications shall make reference to the applicable sections of county regulations. And master.
And the master plan. That makes sense.
We, we should do that.
We should.
And we rarely do that. I take out word control, but govern.
You like that? No objection to that?
No.
Okay. Master plan. It, well, it sure doesn't control anything. Okay, amending a motion, six sixteen.
Again, I would put in voting number. Just to be consistent.
Made by a voting member.
Yeah.
Sure, first sentence. Good catch.
This is where it gets confusing.
It gets a little confusing.
Any amendments, except like both members making the second motion will become part of the motion as a friendly amendment. In the next paragraph, a member may offer a substitute motion, if the substitute motion receives a second substitute motion, that's where I'm just.
I feel like that's confusing, like the substitute thing, it's like, if you don't like it, just vote no on the first one and.
That's why I was trying to simplify the whole motion, to get rid of this.
Yeah.
Confusion, it's really, I mean, this is, this is sort of following some Roberts-Rules border, that's me here just. Go ahead, sorry Scott.
No, I'm sorry, you're talking.
No, that's right, I'm, I talked too much.
So if we were, if we were just to remove the substitute motion.
Yeah.
I think that'll be the way to go, because then it's like, okay, hold on, we can't make another motion, because we already have a motion. It's a result, there can't be another motion.
Right.
Yeah, I like it.
And then if that one fails, then we can look at the substitute motion.
A new motion.
A new motion.
Try to take us back around that, hold on.
We don't, we don't get involved in substitute cases, it just layers the confusion on them, so we're taking that paragraph out.
I would, I would.
Any opposition? Great, I felt the same way when I read it. We're gonna, we're gonna have a lot of substitute motions anyhow. Okay. Now we're moving, discussion. Got new language here, although some of this came, again, came from the past. Meeting procedures, so it's, we've seen it before, it's just a new section.
So there's this section, there's this sentence that say we can ask questions of that. Applicant or, or individuals in the public. That somewhat contradicts our statement earlier that we do not address the public unless it's through the chair.
Where's which?
It's the first, or yeah, it's the first sentence.
So may ask questions.
May ask questions of the, the, the public, seek clarification.
Is on given for from chair.
But what, uh, Mr. Chair, can I ask Mr. So-and-so a question?
Well, this is saying.
This is old language or is this new language?
This is new language.
This is your language, I think.
This probably came from some suggestions that people wrote in, so Carl has consolidated all the comments that people got.
Yeah, I like this, I don't know that we always have to go to the chair, but.
Yeah.
For procedural. Concerns, maybe that is a better way. But this certainly addresses my issues, so we ought to. Get information.
I think we ought to, audience members, especially when it's like two people in here.
Well, the question is, is this discussion regarding post-motion, or is this? Because it says once it closes the public hearing, which insinuates we're, now we're at the table.
So I assume it's a whole new issue?
Well, as soon as the public has already spoken.
And we've asked our questions of the.
I think this is just specifically to discuss the motion.
Yeah.
That doesn't involve public input or, or even staff, in my opinion.
Because if you open it back up, and we've done that before, and it's.
Yeah.
It's gotten out of control.
Yeah, I don't know that we should be asking questions of applicants or individuals in the public at any time during the discussion on a motion.
Yeah, bro, I thought we were prior.
Yeah, I, I agree. I was thinking about like after, you know, their application is presented, and then the, the point where we're able to ask them questions. But that would be in a completely separate part of the bylaws, not around motion.
Correct, this is all specific to just motion.
We would have already taught, been able to talk to the applicant as they did the presentation, ask them questions, the public, we want to make sure anybody who signs in. Anything that they want to say, and then I think, Mr. Chair, you also say, is there anybody in the public that still has anything to add? Before we close the public and then do our discussion, so we even, for that person maybe had something they're thinking about. And then maybe they didn't get a chance, they still get that opportunity, which I think is wonderful.
And then you shut her down.
Then you just say, okay, then we discuss amongst persons.
So do we want to say once the chair closes the public hearing? A motion is made and seconded, the commission shall discuss the motion on the floor here.
Yeah.
Eliminate all of the asking staff and.
I like that.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not gonna argue this thing till the end of time, but this seems limiting. And every time you have a limitation like this. It goes out the door at the first meeting. Because somebody has a question of somebody, somewhere, that they want to ask, and I think we always only have flexibility. As I said, I'm not gonna make a huge deal on it. I just think this is one of the kind of silly things that we do that, that hamstrings at some point.
Even though we already had opportunity.
Yeah, there's always questions.
Victoria.
Something always comes up that somebody's confused about. And. Turn to staff, turn to the audience, turn to the applicant. And just saying we limited here and no more of that seems to me to be. Too controlled, but I'm not gonna talk anymore about it, go ahead, what you want to do.
I was just gonna say like, I agree with Steve just in the fact of like, um, it does say applicant and staff as well as public. And I feel like, even if we're in the middle of a motion, if the motion has to do with the topic, like what was the last? Meeting, we were talking about something and someone said, well, they asked staff, do we have anything from the fire department?
Right.
That would have been inappropriate if this is how we have it set.
Okay.
So I, I feel like leaving that leeway for the situations through the chair. You know, it's not like we're just gonna turn and start asking questions, but we'll have to get approved to ask a question. Um, I feel like that would just be helpful to not limit us in getting all the information that we need to make an appropriate. Decision on the motion at hand.
So can you recommend how you'd have, have, have this read?
I like how it is.
I agree with these guys because there's been many times in the past where we have had to go back to the audience or somebody that was there for a reason. With new information that had come about in the discussion.
True.
Yeah.
Okay.
We'll move on.
Yeah, there's a portion you can take out of that. Where it says members should avoid announcing how they intend to vote before there's a motion and second on the floor. I'd strike that whole sentence out of there. Because it really doesn't say you can't, says you should avoid, doesn't say you will not, so take it out. That comes down to professionalism anyway.
I just don't know, um, after the motion is, you know, made and seconded, you know. Going back at her again. Searching for something, I don't know, I'm, I'm on the fence on that one, though. Seems like you put it out there, you know. Go forward.
So you're saying maybe that discussion should happen prior?
Yeah, I just think after a motion is done, you know. People can, uh. You know, they can read what's going on just like anybody else, maybe say what you want to hear, maybe not, or I don't know. Depends on what the question is, what you're searching for, I don't know. But coming back to the public after it's already done, or I mean, it's gonna get voted on, and they know what, what's going on with the motion and everything. I don't know, I'm leaning both ways on it. I, I think the public should definitely be able to talk, but I think that's. And we're not trying to give out, but there's got to be a time when we're like, maybe go two rounds or something, and then it's over. Give you a round and then another round, but I don't know about after a motion.
The, the way this reads to me is that there's, you know, a public meeting and the chair closes that meeting. A motion hasn't necessarily been made when that. Public hearing has been closed, then there's a period of time where commissioners can ask questions of staff. Of the public, of the applicant, and then this last sentence, once a motion is made and seconded, the commission shall start, shall discuss the motion on the floor.
But then you're talking about.
But, yeah, and you know, there's this kind of confusing language about intention to vote in the middle of those two sentences. But. Yeah, so I don't know, I, we're doing a lot of discussion about when these discussions happen. And the way this paragraph reads to me is actually that, that, a lot of that discussion with public is happening before the motion is made.
Yeah.
And I do think if we take out that wording about members should avoid announcing how they intend to vote, I think that's kind of muddying language right there.
So.
I do agree with Matt and Kate about removing members and avoid announcing, I think that's. Just confusing, cumbersome in that sentence, but I think we have to all to be careful that, you know, I think it's important to open up to the public. It's important to let the applicant speak to us as also answer, answer the questions to the public. But I think there's got to be a time that when we come back and we then deliberate, that we can make a decision if we then open it back up again. Because maybe somebody thinks it's not gonna go the way they want it to maybe go, and then we start getting more information. I think it can get kind of cumbersome.
People start piping up, you know, once you ask one, a member of the public or the applicant a question, then the, someone starts piping up. As though it's a public hearing, even though it's just a kind of information seeking.
Yeah, I don't disagree with you, you're right. Uh, I just remember some instances where, where like we, there was some access issue or something, we didn't clarification. So we've removed the chitney, but, but I'm not gonna die in the hell either. So it still feels like the, the, at least the first two sentences are just in a wrong place, because we're talking about.
I kind of think so too.
Amending a motion, substitute motion, that's removed, and then we talk about a public hearing. And it's like, well. Shouldn't that portion have come before? I mean, the public hearing happens before motions are made.
It does.
Before amendments are made, before this discussions are had, it just seems like those first two sentences are out of place. Once a motion is made and seconded, then, and I do, I, I think, Steve's point, I think it does, you know, somebody may make a motion that. You just totally didn't see coming, and it's like, well, oh, hold on, like, now I've got some more questions, you know, um.
What if we strike the first two sentences and start with once a motion is made and seconded, the commission shall discuss the motion on the floor? Commission members may ask questions of staff, the applicant, or individuals in the public if they need further clarification during discussion.
I think that sounds great.
And keeping out the intending to vote, we're striking that.
Yeah. I don't think we need that, but I think people's intent.
What you're saying, Todd, I think that, you know, we're not here to use our opinion of what is supposed to go, I mean, they're either. In the bylaws to do this or not, they've made all these requirements, they did it or they don't. It's not like, my personal opinion, I don't like solar farm, I don't like this, it's not, has nothing to do with that, it's either they're in or they're out.
There was a school that got approved, and there's no code that required any fire sprinklers in it. But the number of us thought like, maybe a hundred and twenty kids shouldn't be in a stick-built building without some fire sprinklers.
And that.
But there's no regulation to require it.
Did you watch that, though? Now where that's at, if you do. It's right back out, going to deal with that.
What?
Of, of the chain, but it's not like my personal opinion, if I don't like pounds. If they're set and it's, they do everything they need to have a pound, and they're zoned.
I don't think that's what this sentence is speaking to.
What are you, what are you chasing after? You get the facts to, to go back. What would you be chasing, that they didn't already plead their case, and we didn't already hear, other than some lobbying of. Why they want to do it more.
Okay, well, what if there's a motion on the table and I. Say something like, well, I, you know. I like this motion, or this is why, I don't know.
You're stating, Kate, you're stating what you're doing right there.
I think the sentence about intention to vote is kind of off base, because I think that's mostly what we do in our discussion. It's like, hey, I'm thinking I am gonna vote for this motion because I like that applicant, and I think it, I think they meet all these requirements, and someone else. And someone else says, I don't know if I'm going to vote or not, yeah.
I can tell you the context of that.
Yes.
Because we've had moments before motions are made, where people have declared, I don't like this project, or I don't want to get a certain. And I think that's a problem.
Oh, okay, so that's before the motion.
Before the motion, this is all saying, before a motion, we shouldn't be declaring how we're going to vote, because.
Because there is something to vote on.
Correct. And that's really, that's the, that's the genesis of this.
I see, yeah.
It may be inappropriate.
It's in the wrong spot.
Yeah, it may be in the wrong.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I think you can clarify that first sentence there by, at the very end where it says, provided period, prior to making a motion, period. So I'll read it. Once the chair closes the public hearing, commission members upon gaining the floor from the chair may ask questions of the, of staff, applicant, or individuals in the public to seek clarification or information prior to making a motion.
There you go.
That worked. But again, this discussion paragraph is post-motion, is already assumed to be post-motion.
Well, then we need to put it something else.
Then let's, let's put the things that are pre-motion in meeting procedures.
Because I do think it's important that we don't have a preconceived way that it's being seen on how we're going to vote on something.
Yeah.
That I think is what this means. I do think it's maybe in the wrong spot.
Okay, so let's move these two sentences into six fourteen, meeting procedures at the end.
Yes, I agree.
Raise your hand, raise your hand.
Oh, sorry, Victoria.
Pull your chair out in the middle.
Well, I was just going to go back to the same thought that we were talking about, um, about like, what if we really do need clarification on something? And sometimes when things are moving, they're moving on faster than the rest of us, or some of us are feeling they should. Um, and so a motion might be made almost immediately subsequent to ending the public hearing. So if that motion is made and then immediately seconded, as they tend to be, we would then lose our opportunity to clarify on certain things that we maybe didn't get to clarify. That would be very important for how we just, how we decide on the motion at hand.
I've never seen that. I mean, I mean, in all the time, we generally, I mean, Jacob's been sort of a stenographer here and taking, we go through discussions and we sort of write down the, the primary points that everybody individually has said about a specific use. And then we go back and sort of review those, and then someone says, is it time for a motion? I've never seen someone say, okay, motion here, let's pass it. It just doesn't work that way. We, we're really, we over deliberate most of the time instead of under over deliberate. And I think it's, so far it's worked.
Well, and part of the public hearing, you know, back in six point one two, part of the public hearing procedures is that there's time for the commissioners to ask questions of staff, applicant, and others.
To get that staff.
So I think that is like basically a right that's already written down in the procedures of the public hearing that there's not going to be a motion made before the public hearing is closed essentially.
And David would just need to label this six point one seven as a post-motion discussion.
Yeah.
A discussion after a motion.
Should it all be under like one section that says motion, you know, that's, it's all about motions? I don't know.
It's following the flow, it's going motion making.
Yeah.
I think so.
Amending, discussion.
You know, these are very confusing times, the flow of a meeting. Motion making, we're going through the conditions, making sure we got it. Writing these specifics into the bylaws makes it possible for somebody to come back and say, hey, the bylaws say you got to do this one, you didn't. That makes me nervous.
Yeah.
And that's why this Robert Rules of Orders or procedure, et cetera. If we get it to nail down in here, it makes it, it, it makes it possible for somebody to say, you didn't follow rule, you can find the bylaws.
There you go.
I want to tell a boy for people to come here and get stuff done, and not be.
Yeah. So Steve, would you just striking all of this stuff, or?
Just strike the bylaws.
I think we strike the first two sentences.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Say, once a motion is made.
Let's, let's vote on that, there's been a little bit of up and down. Who wants to strike the first two? First two sentences.
I do like the way that, Mr. Chair, the way that Matt had rephrased that too, when he struck those two sentences.
What did he?
Well, he didn't when he struck.
No, he kept them.
He added to the, to be added to the.
Add to.
But struck him with a second sentence.
Yes.
But it was already there.
The public hearing thing, just like, well, that.
Yeah.
We're going to have a public hearing, we're going to ask questions, we're going to have another chance to ask questions. If you're ready to make a motion, make a motion, we're not going to, we're not going to go back to the public.
You got it.
Fine, I like it. Keep it real simple.
Great. Second paragraph, we were doing good. Voting for a vote. Responding to affirmative or negative, manner determined by the chair. Obviously, we're not doing that exactly here because it's a work session. But most of us have been in a public hearing where I think we've upheld these, and it's good to have this in writing.
You're going to add that voting members status in all these.
We can make a note that, yeah, voting members, particularly when it comes to votes.
Hey, we can keep scrolling, maybe?
Keep scrolling.
Go, what's the next sent paragraph? If a commission.
Call a question.
Pending motion, I don't even know what pending motion is.
The motion on the floor, but we're still discussing and discussing and discussing, someone can call. Call it a question, which I, I think we've done a couple of times, and if there's a second, call for a vote, if you get two thirds, which means everyone wants to stop talking about it and we vote, essentially a way to move things forward.
Okay. Sure. But then if there's a second, there's no deliberation.
If there's a second and a vote by the majority on a call to question, or what are you doing? And this, this is, this is from Robert's rules. It's a, it's a good check for the, you know, you could call out the chair and just say, hey, we've talked about this too long, let's call it a question.
And then they vote on voting.
And we have to vote on voting, but.
We've been there.
You've been there. Keep moving. Talking about voting on minutes, I think this is a good, good rule. Should abstain for minutes if you weren't there.
Where are you reading from? I'm sorry.
Seven one.
Seven point one.
That's six point one.
Six point.
Six point one eight. We all said that's great.
Is there six point one eight?
I don't see a six point one eight.
Six point one seven, discussion, and then section seven.
Okay, that up. Proxies are not to be allowed, proxies are not allowed.
Yeah.
That's got to figure out.
All right, who's teaching here?
These are, these are cleaner upper.
Too many regulations in my life.
And do we need to have the associate member shall not, shall vote in accordance with section five.
That's just telling they have to be recognized as a voting member.
So we've already said that, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Strike that.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's good, typo before the associate, there's a little underscore that needs to be taken out. So you're just taking out that sentence anyway?
Uh, keeping proxy, proxies are not allowed. Okay. Again, if anyone has heartburn, please speak up.
So it does say that somewhere else, the associate members, we've already covered that somewhere else, is that correct?
In six, in the six point.
Yes, such members can vote if they're recognized.
Okay, good.
Well, they're a voting member.
When they become, when they become a voting.
Yeah.
So, like this next one, I think this, this kind of makes a point that was being made earlier. I missed last meeting. I had no intentions to violate the bylaws and I voted on meeting minutes. No intent, just, you know.
Right.
Well, they're not, they're not in our bylaws, yeah. That part's not in our bylaws.
But it does happen.
Yeah.
It does happen.
And it really should not.
Right.
And I voted, I shouldn't. That was all right.
And during COVID, we had had our Zoomer, I mean, that was the big change.
So are we leaving this, if a commission member misses a meeting, they shall abstain from voting on the meeting minutes for any meeting missed?
Yeah.
Yeah.
A member may vote on a continued project, provided that they sufficiently reviewed any prior information. What does that mean?
Like, if you miss last meeting and they, there was something on the table that was continued to this meeting.
You can vote.
You can vote on that, you know, if a motion is made during this meeting, as long as you've reviewed the meeting minutes, the staff report from that continued project.
Yeah, the prop, so it's just like an honor system. Yeah, I guess I, I wrote down that, that seems confusing, like contradictory, either you abstain or not.
But you're abstaining from voting on meeting minutes. You don't have to abstain from voting on a project that's been discussed at a meeting that you have missed in the past.
And we have allowed Zoom, if people do go by Zoom, we have amended to that.
I think there's a section in here about that.
I don't know if we have, do we have, it didn't have to be in the section, I'm assuming it's all.
It's covered already, yeah.
But aren't me, aren't the meeting minutes published after our meeting? And therefore couldn't an absentee person review those and still be able to vote upon them later?
No, because voting on minutes is you essentially double checking that staff recorded everything that was said in the meeting.
That makes sense.
Hardy.
That one gives me heartburn, kind of, that's why I really don't like hashing all this stuff out and then table and stuff and coming back. I mean, if, I feel like if we're not getting, you know, if something's wrong, just to table it, and then, because when we have like so many members here, they listen to all the stuff, then those three go on vacation, you got four more come back. I don't know if I feel like, uh, they're getting a fair shake, because, uh, they missed, even if you're reading it or whatever, you're kind of missing what was going on there.
They meaning the pub, the public.
Yeah, the public.
You think the applicant is maybe getting slighted because it.
Yeah, because they got, people are gone, so I like to get stuff done in one night for a couple of reasons.
Sure. But would you want to, you would want to take that second sentence out, Hardy? Member may vote on a continued project?
Yeah, I don't, I just built that, I mean, like I say, I go on vacation, but I listen to all this, and someone else comes in here, he read some stuff and he's voting for it. If I was the applicant, I would want to come in here, plead my case to who's sitting here, and those people vote on my, whatever I was doing.
That's what this says, I think, yeah.
Victoria.
I feel like this kind of goes on what you were saying earlier, Hardy, about like, um, it's not about our opinions, it's about like the regulations. So if they followed the land code, anyone who, even if they missed a meeting, all the information's going to be present for them to read that, compare it to the land code and see, okay. You know, it's not, not so much, yeah, you might miss the public hearing comment section of that, people can fill you in. Um, I know, you know, I just feel like, even if you miss the public comment, if you were so inclined, you can watch it online, these videos are recorded, right? You know, I feel like that's limiting ourselves a lot, actually, if something is continued.
I'm just like, what I'm saying is, I, I really like to not continue stuff if possible. I mean, some of the big crazy ones, it's going to happen. But, I mean, I think that ninety-five percent of stuff that comes through this board, hopefully we can get her hashed out, not waste her time, not wasting more of our time.
Sure, but it's going to happen, things are going to get continued, and we need, especially if it comes to a quorum issue, we're going to need folks to be able to vote on it if they weren't there. Is there anyone else that wants to strike that language? Could we just, um, could we just put a paragraph in there, paragraph space, so that we have meeting minutes, voting, and then we have continued, continued, uh, project voting, just so, you know, because.
Kind of separate plot, a separate issue.
Second.
But under, still, under still under.
Just still under voting privileges, just a different.
So conflict of interest.
Conflict of interest, hot topic.
So, just to be clear, so if, like, say I came and I am the voting member, and I wasn't the other one, and I feel like I didn't review that, I can refrain from voting?
Yeah.
Yeah, because I, I would feel that that's probably what's going to go on. Hey, but I got the best agenda to.
Conflict of interest, do we have any edits here?
The change in this is that if you have a conflict of interest, you need to announce that conflict before the agenda item is heard, not at the time of the vote.
Victoria.
Well, what if you don't know that you have a conflict until after the agenda item has been heard? And something comes up in the agenda item, you're like, oh, I know this person that's, you know, involved in this somehow, and I just don't feel comfortable voting on this, or whatever it may.
Would you know that ahead of time, though? I mean, if you, we're not, the applicant, so would you not know that ahead of time?
Not if it comes up in public comment or something. I mean, it just, I feel like it just limits us, again, like Steve's saying, you don't want to be just totally confined to where I, I do have a conflict of interest, but since it's too late because the agenda's been heard, now I have to vote, even though I have a conflict of interest, I think that.
Mr. Chair, why don't we say something, maybe, if we know in, in the beginning we have a conflict, we announce it before it's been heard, that should be pretty simple. But then possibly if something comes up during.
That becomes the exception.
Then, exactly, you could say, you know, now, you know, Mr. Chair, now that I've heard some additional information, I do feel I would have a conflict, I would like to be refused. You would have to get up from your, you know, turn your plate over, get up, you know, from your desk, and then would she still have the option if she refused herself, where she could then sign in as public comment?
Yeah, that's later.
Is that correct? Okay.
Later in this section.
How would that be, would that?
And, and that's just, I just think if we remove before the agenda item, it, it just encompasses that if at any point you feel that you have a conflict of interest, you can state that. Which is very loose, I mean, anyone at any point can just say, hey, I'm realizing that I might have a conflict of interest, I'm not going to vote on this one.
I don't think you should be talking about it or at the table at all. I think it should happen at the meeting, roll it over, get out, or stay in.
Yeah, I think maybe the intention of this additional language is so that you don't participate, you know, and half of, half of the discussion then say, oh, actually, I'm not going to vote, but I, you know.
Because it's already said.
So scratch all my input, you know, if I just get here.
Yeah, on the other hand, a conflict of interest is so important.
It is very important.
It ought to be declarable at any point.
Yeah.
Yeah, it should be, if there may be instances that arise.
Why should we be able to like talk, you know, in the public hand, and then say, well, I'm not going to vote now, I'm going to sit over here. You'd be part of an hour meeting, and then say, oh, I've got a conflict of interest, and all that's all the information.
The only thing I can say is that conflict of interest in the part of any one of us is so damn important.
But you should know it.
I should, but if somebody doesn't, they ought to be able to declare it.
Protecting what we're dealing with enough to not know that you don't have a conflict.
What if we, Steve, I got a suggestion, what if we just add, uh, before the agenda item is heard, comma, or when a member is made aware of the conflict? Like, with Victoria saying, oh, that's my sister, didn't know.
I am concerned about going through a public hearing and public discussion, and then somebody right before a vote says, I got, I got, you're advocating your role. I don't think you should be able to advocate your role, you, you sit here to vote, and you sit here to hear the public, and you have an, you have an obligation to the applicant to take, to hear it and vote, and then if, if, you know, if everybody says, oh, I've got a conflict interest, we don't have a board.
Victoria.
I really like how, um, how it was just stated, or when the applicant, or when the commissioner becomes aware, because if you're stating your conflict of interest, you should be stating what your conflict of interest is. And it's going to be really obvious if you waited to the last minute to call the conflict of interest when it's something obvious, you know what I mean?
Right.
If you're stating what your conflict of interest is, I think when you become aware of it is, is good language, because um, there's no out for that, you know, if you wait to the very end, you've participated in the whole conversation, and you say, I'm going to say conflict of interest because this is my sister, for instance, you would know that immediately, so therefore, yeah, you've done something very, very wa, wrong and illegal. You shouldn't be participating if you have a conflict of interest.
I got a case in point, when, uh, Prox was here, the traffic engineer, who I've never met, was speaking, but I've also had hired that traffic engineer for a separate job, but I've never met him, so I didn't know.
Is that a conflict?
No, I determined it wasn't a conflict of interest.
I mean, a conflict of interest in my eyes is like, uh, there's a concrete plant coming through and I sell concrete.
Yeah.
I mean, you should, we should have enough review of these, had a respect for the applicants prior to it, to know if we have a conflict of interest. You walk in here, say, I'm out, boys. You shouldn't sit down here, weigh your opinion when everybody else sits over here and can't talk, or gets three minutes, and they get to talk as much as you want, and then say, I'm out.
I agree with you, TK, very much on that, I'm just saying, who knows?
Before you get in, you think, lay it down.
I do think that there, there's ever a time that's that important, that there, the conflict of interest, just be obvious, you know, just step away or whatever. I can't imagine the the potential.
So before each applicant, this is just me, what I do. Um, I make sure I get the address, I go out to the site, I kind of see how things, because when I see things on a plat, everything's fuzzy. And it's easier for me to see how neighbors are gonna be affected by lights and all this kind of stuff. But I think the easiest way to do it is, right there, it has several, four little bullets, it tells you what's gonna be a conflict. And, you know, are you gonna gain something? Are you, is there advantage to you knowing something? I mean, it's gonna, so if you wanna say to yourself and ask yourself those couple of questions, as you're looking through this application that's gonna be coming before you, I think it should give you a very good insight whether or not you're gonna have a conflict of interest. I mean, I happened to border one of the, one of the ones that came up in front of us, of course, that was a direct conflict of interest. And I said something to our chair right away, saying, I happen to border a, a, you know, applicant that's coming up. Regardless of what he was gonna do, I felt that conflict was there because I bordered that piece of property, so. And again, I went by those couple of questions, and it helped me answer if there was gonna be a conflict or not. I think if you go, Victoria or anybody, I'm not picking on you, but if you go, let's say we go a three courses, the, the, the meeting before the motion, and then you say, oh, I have a conflict. I, I didn't realize I was related to this person, let's just say that was an example. We, you have just killed the entire credibility of this entire.
Yeah, confidence.
So, I think, I think to the public, as well as to yourself or whatever, if you feel at any time that you do, bring it up as soon as you can. But I think if you look at these couple of questions, and so, okay, with this applicant, do I have something to gain here? Do I have an advantage? Is this something that would benefit me by having this next to me? Then I think you have to say to yourself, I have to use some common sense here, and it's okay to say, I believe on this one I would have a conflict of interest. Nobody looks differently than anybody else. Um, I think TK, the way you did it was, uh, I think today, Cindy, it's your birthday, and that was an idea to let, you know, everybody know that I could announce my conflict, and I put my name played down and, you know, but you have to remove yourself from this commission table. I think that's very important.
But I, I do, I think I agree with Stephen, Victoria, that if at any point you come up, you realize you have a conflict of interest, that supersedes kind of the, the non-professionality of you participating before that, like, it's worse to have a conflict of interest and vote because you were supposed to announce that conflict
Right.
before the agenda item was heard, than it is to participate in discussion and then realize you have a conflict.
What's the scenario that would that happen?
Well, okay, I can give you a scenario, for example, the Prok situation, he owns Kinnick and Meats.
Yeah.
And I deal a lot with his, Kinnick and Meats in, in my, in my business.
Does everybody?
If I had read the whole application, uh, nowhere did it say he was the owner of Kinnick and Meats, but if his application was for a meat, meat processing facility, and I didn't necessarily stand to gain anything specifically from that facility, and I didn't feel like there was a conflict, but I get in the room and I realize, oh, this is the guy that I actually do business with, I just didn't know that I do business with his family. I should be able to say, you know, oh, this information has come to light, I think this is a conflict of interest and remove myself.
A small community.
Oh, what I'm saying is, I didn't know that until he was here.
I mean, I didn't know he owned Mesa Rentals either, I have a rental company.
I think.
But I'm not gaining anything from him doing this.
No, but I can see a situation where the, the applicant, the application would have been a conflict, like that, that wasn't a conflict for me, but it could have, I can foresee a situation where there's information presented in the public hearing that then you second guess, or, or just the agenda item is open and you're going, okay, wait, like, maybe I didn't read through this application well enough. I do think the conflict of interest is the worst, the worst cases there, scenario.
Steve.
I'm interested how David might advise a client.
Sure, everybody's right, your best practice was to, you know, get out early. But there is the, I don't know, like, I can't think of any, there could be the odd situation where something comes up during the hearing, and a light goes on, you know, then you're probably better off recusing at that point.
Yeah.
Than sitting through the whole meeting and then figuring, well, hopefully he figures this out later on, I had a conflict.
So, this is one of those things that I think we can hopefully use some reason here. Because I think with the language, if we say, if we change it from what it is, we are allowing this to come out at any point. And now it becomes a judgment call on whether we felt like they should have known that sooner or not. Okay, in your case, if the language is this, it needs to happen before the meeting, and then you stand up and maybe like, hey, I didn't realize that he owns Kinnick and Meats, I just now realized that, I need to excuse myself from this. Everybody in this room's gonna be like, I totally see how she could have missed that, and hopefully everybody in the public will use some reason, be like, that seems pretty reasonable, there's, this does not affect my confidence in this planning commission, I can see how that would not be known.
Yeah.
But if we excuse it to happen at any point in the meeting, then it becomes like, now, hold on a minute, you knew that from the get-go, now we are compromised. I hate the language.
For my project in the first place.
Cindy, I got you.
Well, and and I think that too, I think letting, letting a commission person know that at any time they feel like they have a conflict, that to maintain the credibility of the PC is their first, their first priority, and to the applicant. I think anytime that we do that, it shows that we are human. I mean, most of us, using Kinnick as an example, most of us have probably either had something processed at some point there, or, or bought something, but his, but his application was not about a meat processing, right?
I'm just saying, if his application had been about a meat processing facility and not about a, a venue, that's, that, I guess, I'm trying to think of a scenario.
So what about, what about, I mean, this happened with, I think it was Eli at one time. Eli thought he maybe had a conflict, and I, I may not have all the details, when he was on the board with us, and he presented it to us, and said, this is kind of my situation. Do you believe that I have a conflict, or, I mean, maybe do something like that, say, you know, I actually, you know, work with this person, as in, I've done some business with them, as a commission, do you believe that I have a conflict and need to recuse myself? Or do you believe that moving forward, I can be part of this discussion? I mean, I'm just throwing that out there, I know Eli.
Again, that, that happens before we give a hearing.
Yes, oh, definitely.
To Todd's point, this language is pretty good, it's the, the odd time it'll come up, it'll flush itself out.
So are we not adding the language I presented, which was?
Good, it was good language.
Okay, when a member is made aware of this conflict?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that clarifies it enough to like, oh, you remain aware halfway through the public hearing, and you waited until the end of the discussion, you know, you can't wait till the end of this discussion to announce, like, as soon as you know, you say it.
But that allows that.
Um, I just think, because we're dealing with this currently, like, you guys aren't following the bylaws, and, you know, the bylaws are binding. When you make them so strict, um, you are then responsible for, if you, even though we're all understanding and the public may be understanding, it would still be a violation if we make it this, uh, strict, if we allow that language of, you know, or when you become aware, it allows us to be human, how things come up, and it is a small community, you might not know what kind of conflict of interest you could have, or how, um, you know, making a decision on this particular application is gonna affect you, until you see who's all involved, which might not be covered in the agenda. Um, I just, I really, I would advocate for that addition of that language, um, or when, when the commissioner becomes aware, and I think it's gonna be very obvious, um, when we state what our conflict is, when we would become aware of that.
Great. Does anyone not want that language in there? TK, TK and Hardy. Okay, could we go, so let's four, let's, let's vote on this, the language to stay in, we're gonna say, add comma, or when a member is made aware of the conflict, can I, we're gonna raise the hands that want that language in? Add the language, or when a member is made aware of this conflict.
In the beginning or when they are made aware?
Yes, one, two, three, four, five, six, and then do not want that extra language. Okay, close. Um, we'll present it with it in, if, you know, when we get the final in, if we have motions to strike, then we can, yeah.
So this is just a suggestion now, but if we then read it and decide differently, we can always do.
Yeah, so I'd like to keep moving, we're, we've gotten, we're stuck, stuck in the mud. Uh, anything else on conflict of interest? Um, do we, do we agree with Landy's code amendments, zoning map amendments, master plan amendments?
So just for clarification, if someone declares a conflict of interest after the hearing or some portion of it, are we gonna be able to question the validity of the conflict? Or somebody says, I got a conflict of interest, are we then not asking, what's the conflict? I mean, if we're gonna say at any time, we should be able to say, what's your conflict?
Yes.
Describe it.
What, why does it make a difference?
Because it advocates your role as a, as a commission, if you're gonna say I got a conflict.
Well, I, I mean, if they're declaring a conflict, they're gonna, they're defining in their own minds a legal impediment to their participation. Why do we care about what that is? That's important to them.
Does it affect the way you vote, it is? If you, if we have a tie vote, when people start abstaining because they have conflict of interest, you have no vote.
Can't you abstain from a vote?
They're not gonna.
Regardless? If, you can just say, I'm, I'm, I'm torn, I don't know.
I don't know that the.
I don't, can you?
I think in the law, in our bylaws, it talks about a yea and a nay, it doesn't talk about an abstention. Or, I don't know.
It's no different than going to jury duty and saying, I believe I can't be a good juror because of this.
But, but you get, you do that before you get elected to the church.
Or you sit there and listen to the whole case and talk about it.
You don't get to go hear the whole case and say, I, I, you know, I, I didn't.
I think they should absolutely have to declare, if there's, it happens in a meeting, well, yeah, if it happens in a meeting, unexpectedly, they should have to declare why.
You're saying you don't want anyone to abstain from voting?
Well, I think they're gonna, it could be used.
Conflict of interest.
It could be used as the way to abstain from a vote.
Sure.
And I think that defeats the purpose of being on the clinic.
Well, in a person who's present.
I believe the conflict of interest is a very serious matter, and we leave it in the hands of the individual to, to, to determine if you have a conflict, but the obligation is to look at the, what's coming up in the hearing before and understand, like, okay, I live next door to this, or I know this person. If it's a Kinnick and Meat, if you, you know that it's a meat processing, you're gonna ask those questions in your head before, and you could say, like Sydney said, I may have, or like, Eli, I may have a conflict, that's before the hearing.
That's right.
But not let the guy go through a three-hour testimony and say, okay, I decided I do have a conflict, I, I think it's just wrong.
I agree.
I agree.
So, what are, are you saying that we need a, a statement that says members need to state what their conflict is?
I'm just asking for clarification, that if somebody declares a conflict, are we, are we able to question the conflict?
Why it's, well, they just voted.
They voted that you can do it at any time.
But now we get to question it, because I wanna know if, like, they were on vacation, just rolled in here, or if they could have figured this out um, in the last two weeks, that, that's what I, I'll go on that one.
I just don't want people to use conflict of interest, like, I'm just saying what the conflict is, to abstain from a vote.
I don't think a declaration of a conflict needs to be explained. I think the conflict is in the mind of the person declaring it. And that's the most important element.
It should be in their mind before the meeting.
Well, it, it should be, but it doesn't necessarily always have to be. If you're concerned about whether or not it's gonna affect the overall vote, I mean, right now, I believe that we could vote present.
What was changed then?
For instance, yes, no, present, I'm here.
Good.
But I'm not voting yes or no.
I don't think there's anything to keep us from abstaining from vote, is there? Or anyone's aware of, um, I think, that kind of like you're saying, Kate, if we are completely torn, and we feel that the, the motion at hand is not something that we agree with, that we have no no say in changing it at this point, because it's been made and seconded, and nobody wants to second the amendment. You know, it might be harmful to have to vote no on something that you could abstain from.
Well, you'd have to do that on paper, A, you know, if you're gonna abstain, you can't walk. All these guys vote, and you listen to them all, like, oh, shit, we're tied, I'm gonna abstain from a vote.
I would totally be for having paper ballot votes.
Okay, so let's finish this conflict of interest thing before.
Please, yeah, TK do this.
Well, let's get, let's move on, because I just.
At this point, TK, I guess your clarification is that there's nothing that states you have to state what your conflict is. And if someone wants to add that into the bylaws, that needs to be suggested.
I was, I mean, if you're gonna declare conflict in the meeting, I think you absolutely should have to state conflict. In the meeting, in this last round. If it is. Prior to a meeting, no, it's your business.
Okay, we're scrolling down.
If a person doesn't want to declare what it is, are we saying that they can't declare it?
They should have to declare it.
Yeah, they have to.
Don't wanna declare.
Then it shouldn't be on this commission.
Can't, well, and it's not fair to the applicant.
No, it says it in A.
These guys get three minutes.
Yeah, no, it says it under A, I mean, pardon, any member of the commission who has a conflict of interest on any matter shall disclose the conflict on the record before the agenda items are, so yes, we have to disclose it?
Yes.
Or, or when it becomes, when it becomes aware.
When they come aware, it also goes on the record.
If we're adding, when they become aware.
And we are.
Yeah, I like that.
Conflict on the record before the agenda item is heard, or when they become aware.
Oh, and then.
And then shall volunteer.
Make it their seat.
Right, the objective here is to force that person to vote, is that right?
No.
Is that what we're doing?
No.
That's, that we're really afraid. No, that's abstention, we're, we're getting to that later, let's just work through conflict here.
We're almost done with it, we're going to see the new language, scroll down. Any commission member that has recused their position may step down and comment, which we've we've had this before. Okay.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know about participating as a number of ones who have conflict of interest.
Well.
You lose your rights as a member of the public.
Yeah, what if it's your neighbor, and you really have a, a, an objection to what they're doing?
Because you already have a relationship with these people where your, where your words may carry extra weight. And if, if Hardy's out there doing a project, and I recuse myself, I go say, no, Hardy should not do this project, I recuse myself because he's a competitor, and he should do the project, you know, I don't think that is at all, uh, we.
But that's on us, I guess, you know.
Guess we need to clarify, but we have lives too, we actually wanna come through here and do some work, so I mean, with that abstain from us, I mean, like what you're saying.
Like, we've recused our rights as citizens.
Subdivision that I'm putting in, I gotta come here and get a whole new board.
Well, okay, if you're the applicant.
It was from the applicant.
You can't vote on your own application.
Yeah.
But we have a relationship.
So, so the scenario that.
I hear.
I should quit three years before I, and.
Yeah.
So the scenario that you just set up is you have a hearing, and it's your neighbor, and you don't think you have a conflict of interest, and then all of a sudden he brings up something about water. And like, wait a minute, I didn't know he's gonna talk about water, I got a conflict of interest because that water comes to me. I'm gonna recuse myself, and I'm gonna go speak against this, because I just heard something that I don't want, I think is a horrible situation.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think, you, you can add it both ways, you have a conflict, you know it, or you don't. But like, the.
So do we wanna strike, see?
I'd like to keep it just for the fact of, like you're saying, like, it's, it's completely, uh, possible and likely that we will be members of the public at some point for some application, and we will have to announce, um, a conflict of interest in order to be a member of the public.
Yeah, I think.
But before a year, before the year.
Before.
Before the hearing is okay.
You're saying this specific item C, you would like us to have to do before, well, we're gonna have to do that because, I mean.
You've just allowed.
The hearing.
They just voted to allow the conflict of interest to happen at any time you're aware of.
Yeah, but if you're. Yeah, but if the hearing is already happened. Then you can't join the hearing.
So then do you wanna add, due to conflict of interest? As stated prior to, so you can only talk as public if you know about it prior to the meeting.
Accused prior.
I think so, I think that makes sense.
Agree.
Great. Moving on. If you find out in the middle of a meeting, no, you can't go up and say, oh, well, yeah, great. I think that language will fix that. Officers, we're, we're at seven twenty. We've got a few more pages, let's see if we can get through this. Let's, let's just keep on keeping on. Uh, okay, eight point one, chair and vice chair shall be from different commission districts, I know where this came from.
Yeah, I still blame it's important. And I think our latest challenges for the Landy's code helped affirm that even more. Uh, is that there is balance on the planning commission and. If we have succession of, which is the idea from vice chair to chair. Yeah. That having the vice chair and chair being of different districts. It's a good thing because then we would sort of have. Not the automatic succession into a chairmanship of the same district. And, and this, if we prove this, this would not affect. The current situation, this will only be for future. I, I just think it's balanced and I think that that's what sort of the public is interested in. I don't wanna complain.
I agree with you, but. Sometimes we get into the situation where we don't have an option, right, there's certain people that are. That we vote on, that we feel are ready for that position. And we don't have an option, so I'm not gonna vote on someone that just came up to the game. Just because there's two of them in the same district, so I don't know if we, I, but I agree with you, but I don't know how we fix it because sometimes that, that we don't have an option. That everybody feels good, or the voting majority feels good about, uh, voting majority feels good about that will restrain.
You know, um, when that position came up. I nominated Kate, not because she was from the same district as our chair. But because I felt she had the knowledge, the tenure. Um, approachability, um. Communication skills. Things of that caliber, that is exactly why I nominated her. Um, it wasn't because I felt trying to give a district an advantage, as it can be potentially twisted that way. I think that these two individuals bring a lot to the table and they work exceptionally well together. And they represent us as a planning commission in utmost fashion.
Please don't think I disagree with that.
I've never understood that, that's why I did.
You for the very, the very reason I'm talking.
And I was honored, but I also recused myself from that, Stephen, I would say that in front of you, as I told you. I was honored that you did that and I started out as an associate, a non-voting member that helped me learn. I took the time to spend time with Kate and Kim and Carl in office meetings besides our planning commission, so I, I took that. To go learn more, but I felt that at that point Kate was more qualified. And I can still learn a lot from her by having her as our vice chair, so that's.
TK.
We've had a lot of discussion about bill boxing ourselves in.
Yes, we have.
And not having flexibility, and I think this is a good example of not having the flexibility and I, I don't agree with it. For that reason and. I, that's, go ahead, I'm done.
I don't, I don't have a job with, with the situation as it is, or even continue. These are both seasoned. Members that have been very loyal about attendance. And, and they're both level-headed. Uh, they make good sound decisions. And it doesn't matter to me if, if, if they're men and women, I don't care. It doesn't matter if they're same district.
Please believe me, I'm not doing it.
I wanna address Steve's concerns specifically, cuz I've thought a lot about this, not specifically cuz I'm in the position we're talking about, but because. Why is it important to have that balance? Or where is that balance, where, where are we seeking balance and for what reason? And I think the way I thought through it is that the job of the chair and the vice chair are to run the meetings. And that, those are our skills and qualifications that are kind of hopefully have nothing to do with the district you live in. And. Um, that's what we should be voting on rather than. You know, the job of the chair and, and the vice chair, if, if the chair is gone. Is to make sure everyone in the meeting does have. The ability to speak and that there is balance and opinion. Um, you know, whether it's the district or whatever else. And so the, the balance and kind of representation doesn't. Really apply to the job of the chair. Um. And, you know, I'm, I'm, I would be fine with it if, if it changed, but I also don't think that like balance in, in representation is really. What we're, what the job is. What is required of the job of the chair and the vice chair, I guess. And furthermore, if the vice chair replaces the chair and they're from the same district, you're kind of at. Point zero, you know, you're not. Like, why, why would it be bad for the vice chair to be from the same district as the chair? If what they're doing is the chair's job, if the chair can't do it, does that make sense?
Yeah, my, my response to you is that does make sense, what you're saying, and I agree with that. But I will, I will absolutely guarantee you the day. That we have the chair and vice chair. From this side of the county, the North Fork is gonna gripe. I've been on here six years and every year we have had either the chair or the vice chair from the North Fork Valley. And that changes. This is gonna be a, a gripe session in this county. That's my point here.
You in line.
I, I, unfortunately, I think we're always gonna have gripes from somewhere in the county, I don't think we're ever gonna get away from that. I think it's really important that we always nominate chair and vice chair based on the two best people from all of our members to accomplish those tasks. So I don't like the idea of, it's almost like a participation trojan mentality, like. You were more apt for the position, but sorry, there's somebody else from your district already in that position, so we can't do this. Our balance comes from, it still takes multiple members from other districts that have to vote them in. And then when we're voting on matters, it's still gonna take multiple members from other districts to approve those measures.
We've already changed that by virtue of limiting the tenure of the chairman.
Hardy.
Um. At the end of the day, really, it's nothing to take away from this chair and vice chair position up here, but. From my experience, it's not like they get to talk more and they get to listen more, listen more. And their vote is just as good as anybody else's here, so it's not like they got a, they're on a power pedestal up here, um, they usually get.
The chairs are better though.
Yeah, better chair.
They weren't, they weren't till you got.
So I, I, I mean, Steve's big point, it would be nice if they're from different districts, but what supersedes that is having competent chairs will leave it. And, and so I think it's, we should not limit ourselves.
Strike this guy, boy.
Or is there anyone who wants to keep it in other than Steve, sorry, Steve?
He changed his mind once.
Moving on.
Could I put up a motion to strike that last sentence, the chair and vice chair shall be from different?
You know, we're not making one.
We, we got it, we got. Uh, eligibility. One for your service. Are there any objections to this? It's not.
It's good as written.
Yeah.
Move on. Ending up chairman, keep moving on. Uh, terms of office.
So I think we should, one year term of office is fine, we should not limit it to succession, are we there yet?
We are there.
Yeah, eight point five, we're at eight point five?
We're at eight point five.
I mean, we, there's, I don't see any reason, we can always vote for somebody else if we don't like the chair, or if we wanna change chairs. Otherwise, if the chair is doing a good job, then why abstain from card?
So why did we go away from? Two year. It takes a while for individuals to kind of get. Into a position where they're comfortable, the meetings are running smoothly, why are we not staying with a two-year term with only a one-year gap? To where they can reapply for one of those positions because. I, I understand why we're only going one year and then turn over.
It was one year. Last, it has been one year, the one-year term that you can serve. Twice in a row, consecutively, they have to take one year gap, I think it's just be one-year terms, we can vote on every year.
Or we vote, we have to vote every year.
Oh, we vote every year, Kate, would that person be able to remain there for another year?
Only twice, I'm saying remove any other time constraints, who wanna vote for the same chair five years in a row because they're doing a good job.
That's right, I agree.
Otherwise, we'll vote him out, or we will vote for somebody else.
Victoria.
I know I've got the strong opposing opinion here, but I think term limits are really important. Um, I think that. If you're not taking this seriously, I mean, we've already established that now you're gonna sit in here for a year. And, and, you know, take in everything and how it works and everything. Um, I think if somebody is doing a good job, that's not to say that somebody else wouldn't do a good job, it's saying that if you are not. If they don't have a term limit, that other person will not be afforded the opportunity to ever sit in that position because there's no term limit.
Because we're voting every year. One-year term.
But there's no term limit. Um, in every position or every. Election of office that there is in this country, there's term limits.
I resonate with, I think we should keep it as well. Um, let's put it to a straw vote. Does anyone else wanna keep it? Who wants to?
Keep term limit.
Who wants to keep the two-year term?
You mean to keep two consecutive terms?
Two consecutive years.
So you may not be allowed to serve more than.
Two consecutive years without taking a break.
Unless, but this has like unless no other nominations are made. What, huh?
We just did that.
Yeah.
Cause the discussion goes. Okay, I, I see no, no valid reason for having musical chairs for, for chairman. Because. We're, we're still a democracy here, still, still take a vote every year. And there's some people that don't wanna be chairman, I've been chairman of so many organizations, I've been asked to do it, run for it, I'm not interested. And there's probably other people that are not interested. And if, if TK did an excellent job, you're doing an excellent job. Uh, it's still all comes down to the vote. And if you guys are willing to serve, we appreciate the jobs you're doing. And why don't we just, you know, why don't we have the option to elect wherever we want, there shouldn't be any time constraints.
I agree.
It wasn't two months ago that this would have been, well. Okay, so this was in place, that literally somebody on this commission was gonna get forced to be chair, that didn't wanna be chair.
Exactly.
We're, we've talked about pigeonholing ourselves into a situation where we cannot be flexible. The chair, the vice chair, they are two votes. Out of all this, they, they cannot dictate what this planning commission does. They guide the conversation and if there's somebody that's doing that well and. Nobody else that is either more able to or even want to at all, I don't think there's any reason that we should force this person that's doing so well to have to step down.
Especially if we're in the middle of a contentious issue like Landy's, right, if, if. T, we had lost TK a month prior, then that would have been. Worse, I mean, we, it's, it's nice to have continuity. Uh, in, in many situations, and if we don't want the chair, we can vote for somebody else.
Each chair is gonna be different, but you know, my interpretation was it's a bigger commitment than just sitting there.
Yeah.
And yeah, I, for myself, I attend every meeting that the OCC has on Landy's. You know, any seminar I can get or public other meetings, I try to attend, just, that was just me, I'm not saying everybody else has to do it. Because people would call me and say, what's going on here? And I felt it was my obligation to do it, every chair is gonna be different. But in, you know. Again, I'm not gonna fight for myself here, but I, I think the census, the consensus is we don't want term limits and boxing us in again. And we should be able to figure that out here and move on. Is that fair to ask?
True.
Victoria, can you, if you. If you are still in favor of the term limits. Reiterate why you think they're important. Uh, with the knowledge that there is an election every year, it's not an ongoing position that, that anyone else that would want to serve still has the opportunity to. Contest that election, is there another reason you see a value in term limits?
Um, I, I think that, um, the chair does have certain powers that we don't have. You know, not powers to make decisions, not powers to, you know. Make any huge, um, decisions for us, but. They have power, if they're doing their job well, we may just be inclined to reelect them. That is gonna prevent other people, you two had no interest in serving these positions and you're doing a fantabulous job. So that wouldn't have happened because nobody volunteered. Um, that wouldn't have happened if we didn't have term limits, I think that taking, taking steps to. Um. To get the knowledge and the experience and. Have the dedication, I mean, it's all part of serving on this commission. Um, I think eventually we all should. Be a chairman or a vice chair if we are determined and committed enough to serve on this commission. Um, I think that it is a, a higher commitment, but it distribute, distributes the power, kinda goes off what Steve's saying. There's, um, whether it's just a notion in the public or not. There is a reason why there's term limits, you know, just because a president does a really good job two terms in a row and might. Get the majority of the votes, doesn't mean he should have a third term just because he gets majority votes. I think that it, it just makes it fair for everyone to, to step up, get out of their comfort zone, I mean. You guys are all doing it right now, you two, and. You wouldn't be more than likely if, if there wasn't term limits, and I think that gives you more experience under your belt, gives you a perspective. Um, I just. Again, like I said, in a lot of forms of government, there are term limits for a very valid reason. And that is to limit, um, overreach, to limit, um. Too much, and.
I think you made it.
Yeah, okay, yeah, yeah.
Thank you, but just. It's not true that they didn't want it because Kate resigned, Jacob was volunteered for the position. So he knew exactly that if, if there was a change, he knew exactly what he was getting into, I don't think. There's a question that he didn't wanna be there, he knew very well that he couldn't be there, so I, I don't, I disagree with your analysis.
One more thing, I don't know that we should all have an opportunity to be chairs, honestly, I've seen chairs on this board that shouldn't have been chairs and it was chaos. So, and not everybody's cut for chair, but if we all feel that we want to nominate and elect somebody as chair because they're competent, then we'll just do it.
Hardy, Hardy, Jacob, last year, did you, were you nominated for chair?
I ran two years ago.
Okay, so I'm just getting a little tired of these statements that are put out there that are not true, we're getting, you know, we've been throwing out here a lot of stuff on the record that's not true. And I think we should do a little research before we throw all this stuff out, because. They ran for this a year ago when you weren't even probably living in this county.
And why didn't you?
Okay.
Because we didn't, the nine people didn't vote him in, that's why, that's the power of voting, you know. So all I would encourage, I'm talking, please, remember, you did it to me, I'm talking now. I feel like there's been some lies spread on this board. By you, and uh, you need to do your research before you run your mouth, cuz I'm not really into it. And I'm a farmer, just like you're a farmer, there's a lot of stuff you've said that I disagree with. So. If you're gonna run your mouth, make sure you got your facts in order, cuz you just did it again.
Okay, this feels more like a personal attack.
Well, it can be whatever it wanted to be.
If you wanna address any, any statements.
I'm addressing it right now, you just said it, two minutes ago.
Hardy, we're bringing it back, terms of office, terms of office.
I, I do wanna come back to this, cuz I do wanna address.
Taylor, come back to it.
Lies.
We will come back to it.
Okay, can we move forward on this?
We're moving forward, no one wants to, well, some of us want term limits. Put it to a vote, who wants no term limits?
No term limits.
No term limits, raise our hand.
We have a term limit.
Okay.
Okay, no, no, no limits on consecutive service.
Correct.
Forgive me. Okay, uh, who would like to see consecutive years stay in? That's what, okay.
Stay on as long as you want.
Great.
As you're voted in, is that what we're saying? So as long as you get voted in each year.
Let's clarify.
We're keeping it stricken, first sentence, red line is stricken. Now we're moving, do we wanna keep the? Now we're moving, do we wanna keep the intent as to forward members, which kinda seems like a little over explanation for bylaws?
Uh, I would strike all of that.
Yeah, I'd strike all that.
Or maybe add, there is no limit to consecutive service as, as long as you're voted in.
The term of elected office shall be one year, effective on the day of the meeting, terms can be consecutive.
Yeah, and no limit.
Isn't there something in the state legislature that just defines it clearly? That then we, with our previous bylaws, tried to make more, or more restrictive.
Our previous, the changes in two thousand nineteen, to the bylaws about the term of limits, had to do with a chairman that thought he was going to be there for life.
Right.
And then, everybody sort of figured out what you needed to, like, were you guys on?
No, but I've heard that context from Robbie, that there was a.
I would, I would like to, I would like us to have a vote each year, whoever we feel is a qualified person for the chair and co-chair, whether that person was there the year before or whatever. We should have that choice, we should not be limited or handcuffed on who we feel as a group when we vote is gonna be the best position for the chair and co-chair.
Okay.
We'll strike everything else.
Strike everything else. And there's gonna be vacancies. Uh, that one's pretty cut and dry. Eight point six vacancies, eight point seven nominations, annual meeting, any member of the commission, including.
I was just imagining a scenario, because Steve is right, Jake and I are both from the same area, and there is a scenario in which both of us have a conflict of interests. Due to the people that we associate with or something. What happens if the chair and the vice chair are either not able to serve because of conflict of interest, or if we're both on vacation at the same time, do we have a way of electing a provisional chair? Well, we were almost on vacation together on our first meeting where we're supposed to serve as chair and vice chair, and I had a question of what would happen then?
I don't think that's ever arisen.
We can add a clause, we can add a clause to electing a.
Provisional chair.
That's what I was just saying, Todd, I think we should postpone the meeting. Yeah, if the chair and co-chair are not able to attend the same meeting, then that meeting would be postponed.
What if it's a conflict of interest?
How about, how about if the county code enforcement officer steps in and?
We, we can also simply put in an option that in the event that the two chairs are unavailable, that an interim chair can be designated by the voice of the commission to serve for that meeting.
You've got it, you guys got that? Eight point seven nominations. Including associate members. Including associate members can nominate.
Should we make that nominate another member, other than themselves? I mean, should we allow people to nominate themselves?
We already have a thing that says associate members can't serve.
This position saying the thing here. So you can nominate yourself? Okay.
So an associate member can't vote? But they can nominate?
We don't like that?
I would strike that.
You better strike it.
Okay.
As much as I'd like to be able to, unless there's not another member there, just like.
And after a voting member in that meeting, then yes, Todd, they would have that option then to nominate.
So it should say any voting member?
At the annual meeting, any voting member of the commission can nominate. One more elections, eight point eight. Um, this is just talking about may be done in secret ballot rather than shall. It's a good idea. Associate members may participate in the vote for officers.
Oh, so then should we allow them to nominate?
So then they cannot vote? He has just voted.
Keep it consistent.
Okay. Sorry, Matt.
That's cool. I don't wanna be the chair either.
We're at section ten. Oh, right, yeah, new section ten is amendments.
Section eleven's amendments. I see, okay.
Let's, let's keep rolling. Um, we don't have any substantive changes till section thirteen.
Amendments have changed here, so I wanna rethink this.
Where, amendments? Eleven, oh, functions of planning staff, okay.
Something changed though, is that some numbers? Or you wanna add something, Steve?
I don't know.
Okay, you can think. Okay. Let Steve think. Section, what will now be twelve, professional performance bias. Some of this language comes from John Bayer, the county attorney, as he felt some of this language was problematic. And I believe he suggested, you know, I believe, I'm not entirely sure, but I think he suggested the new language. Starting on page twenty.
Let me see that new language.
Scroll down.
Under bias, it starts as members. Members of the commission should not engage in public communication matters.
That are, will come before them, including but not limited to social media, email, and news outlets. Members shall avoid speaking publicly in favor or in opposition to any application or other quasi judicial matter pending before the commission. Such statements of opinion could create the appearance of predetermination. Members shall not participate in social media texting or email during a commission meeting, such action could create the appearance of ex parte. Okay. Grumbling, um, keep moving on. Members shall avoid speaking publicly in favor or opposition to, we've been over this as well. Okay. Section. Next one gives, there's a lot of numbers in there. Twelve point two, thank you, shall not directly or indirectly solicit or accept any compensation. Seems pretty straight. Ex parte. This has been confusing, I think, through most of our tenure here on the planning commission.
Yeah, where does that, where do you draw the line on a commission member wanting to get educated on what's gonna happen? Uh, so, somebody could present something to, to the commission, why can't I ask him what it's about?
You can't do it before the hearing.
Why not?
That's why we had a hearing.
And expired knowledge only to you, not to the rest of us?
Which is pretty standard stuff for many boards.
Mostly judges.
So you, most investigations, you just have to do it on your own, avoiding the applicant or the people associated with the app.
Or you can work with staff prior to, and ask, get clarifications from them and say.
Or like that staff report out early so I can have a little time, I don't like these hour before the many emails, I can't.
Sure.
And it's not unusual to ask staff if there's something complicated, to get an answer for it.
That's not ex parte, it's talking to each other, saying, hey, how do you feel about this?
Happens quite often, that I'm in their office and saying, I don't understand this, could we get some answers, maybe do a really good job out of it.
Yeah, this current staff is very easy to work with.
Okay, um, commission member who engages in ex parte shall disclose the source and context to the commission prior to the item being heard. Commission may consider the member to abstain from voting. If such ex parte communication creates an appearance of impropriety.
So what we're saying is ex parte is not necessarily conflict of interest, is that right?
Right, and if you bring it forward to the commission, we can name it, that you should abstain. But if you bring it forward and we all, you know, if we think it's valuable information that perhaps staff missed, or the applicant didn't bring forward, we may commend you for it, but this is mostly in terms of, don't go talking to the applicant before the meeting. Good, moving. We're here, last. Section communications between commission members outside meetings, also complicated. We have some stricken language, the new language.
Ask a good question on this one here. So, let's say for example, after a meeting, we have, we were to have a conversation with somebody else, just ask a question to make sure we understand our clarity of something, is that considered ex parte though? I mean, I, I would say if I said, hey TK, I was kinda thinking about this, and I think I'm gonna vote this way, let's just say. Then I could understand that I'm, I'm crossing a line. But if I were to say, you know, hey, this is kinda how I'm understanding this, that how that seems to have been presented, is, it says here, no, you know, no all communication, written communication, I can understand social media, of course, but with other members outside of scheduled meetings, I mean.
Yeah, pending, on a judicial matter pending before the commission, so, so after.
Okay, okay.
Can't walk over to your house, have a beer, and start talking.
You can.
One of our challenges is that our communication has been limited by the email requirement. I've always brided against that, because it limits the ability for us to learn about issues that are not on the agenda, or not part of an application, but just issues that may ultimately impact land use and what we can.
Right.
We should have the ability to do that without restraint.
Right.
But I think that, that's not a, a quasi judicial matter pending before the mission.
Yeah, and there's new language on the next.
You can email out or text out or whatever, say, hey, look at this article, it's interesting.
Yeah, we always had that, don't push. Reply all, and I, I suppose that's not most nonsensical, that's a Delta County.
Right. But this is clearing up, don't hit reply all if it's pertaining to a matter at hand.
And it, I mean, it really could if there's an open records, a court request, and there's a bunch of replies on all the records, I'm really saying.
It's an application, right, but if it's about affordable housing.
Right.
Yeah.
Or land use, the new state law regarding land use, it's gonna impact everybody, that's something we all ought to be learning about. And, uh, these kinds of things limit that.
Last new sentence, the commission member may request to have an item added to the agenda if there's an interest to discuss. Such matters between commissioners.
Yeah, I'd like to just add that, that as long as permission has been granted by the, by the member, I, I don't know that we automatically, just cuz we're on the same board, expect to get everything from everybody. We share our emails and it's published, but I, I don't want, I get a box inundated with things that may not, I mean, I wanna say, hey, I don't want that, you know.
Are you talking about prior paragraph?
No, any commission member wishes to share general information related to commission business may email, and I'm saying with permission.
Okay. With permission?
Yeah, with permission, I don't think you should automatically have a right to just send, I shouldn't be able to send you everything unless you said, yeah, I'm interested in that.
Okay.
Victoria?
I as a person.
Yeah.
You gotta call them, it's not, it's, it's not a problem if you call them one-on-one.
Send stuff and they say, hey, don't send it to me anymore.
Please don't call me every time you wanna email me something.
Uh, Victoria.
I just wanna clarify though, that this is saying that emails, even about general information, should be, um, emailed to the entirety of the commission, of the commission, or staff to have them email it to everyone. Because, you know, open meeting laws, we shouldn't be having even on general information that could, um, you know, affect our opinions on the matter, whether it be just even a, a, an article on zoning, you know, if you were to send that to one person and not the entire commission, that one person is now gonna have a bias because of that article that nobody else has. So I think that adding in there, um, you know, any commission member who wishes to share general information related to the commission business, may email all commission members or staff directly.
I like that. Anyone else? General, general information.
Yeah, I mean, it's not an opinion, I mean, your opinion is one thing, like, I get back to you, like, our opinion doesn't really matter that much when it comes down to, you know, to do with or not, it's in the book.
Right.
What's supposed to be happening here, right?
TK doesn't wanna have.
That's mostly what I'm hearing.
So I, I do wanna go back to the voting thing, I, I really agree with TK, that there shouldn't, I don't see a reason that we're here to abstain from votes, we should be voting yea or nay, and I think, if that's not in our bylaws, I would, I think we should add that.
Okay. Let's, um, can we, let's finish this, we're gonna go back to the highlights that we did in the first one, and if there's anything new.
Were we done with this?
No, we're not done with ex parte, is there any other thing related to communications between commission members?
So the very last sentence, the commissioner may request to have an item added to the agenda if there's an interest to discuss such matters between the commissioners. Shouldn't, should just say.
So, that's like in lieu of replying all and having a discussion over email, you can request to have an item added to the agenda so that it's discussed amongst commissioners.
They could just say, a commissioner may request to have an added managed agenda, it doesn't need to rest the sentence.
That's right.
Correct.
And this goes to education again, on issues that may really impact us someday, and having one commissioner say, I like to see that as a discussion item. That we all learn about it together, and have a chance to take around. We've always had the limit, we haven't, actually, two thousand nineteen, I had to argue for sort of this language. But before that, we couldn't do that.
So, so I have one question, this, you, you think any individual member should be able to put something on the agenda that doesn't necessarily have the support of anybody else? I wanna put something.
I don't think that there should be a freedom of speech issue, okay. I mean, controlling freedom of speech, that every committee member, hopefully responsibly, but not a guarantee of responsibility.
How about we have a time limit period? I mean, I don't like to get things like where I don't have a time to read it and see what it's about. I've already got my brain on an applicant or the agenda that's already been given to me by Kim ahead of time. Could we have something where it has to be to the staff by, I don't know, a sort of time period before? Because otherwise, it's very confusing for me to print it, and then that person or whoever maybe wants to discuss it, but we haven't all had a chance. Hardy's usually coming here from work, he's not running back home to his computer to have him or Whitney print something off. He's, you know, usually coming right here from his job sites. Can we do a time limit sometime?
Yeah, the idea was that somebody would suggest that for a future agenda.
Yeah, oh, okay, and I'd be fine with that, I would be fine with something like that, but I just think it.
And we have, we have an item on our agenda. E, Commissioner comments, request referrals, and that's where we would be adding.
But I also think you make a good point about sending stuff out. Uh, it sounds like you sent an email out, Victoria, prior to this meeting, I didn't get it. Cause I wasn't, I don't know when it came.
It was like four o'clock.
So then there's the things being discussed, I think there, you know, it should be at least twenty four hours beforehand.
Yeah, something, just we all have a time to gather it.
So commissioner may request to have an item added to a future agenda. So that we're letting them know that it's not the, it's a future agenda, not some.
Maybe like any commissioner can, you know, email or send the staff an email. If, if the commissioner wishes to discuss this item. With other commissioners, it must be added to a future agenda.
Yeah, once the agenda is published, you can't go adding stuff to the agenda, so.
That's what I'm concerned about, is that the public is gonna say, whoa, whoa, how did this get added? Here we are, we're discussing something that they.
Do you want to do that in our meeting?
And Carl. You could email Carl some points throughout the week, or whoever new Carl is. And say, hey, you put us on the agenda.
But I think the good rule is that if the agenda has been published, anything that comes after that goes on the.
I do like that, that's okay that I.
So do we want to keep this, or do we not, like, this last?
I still think you get rid of that last part of that sentence, just add it to the.
Just add it to the agenda.
Anybody can add anything, or maybe if you want to do any type of limitation, maybe you would have to ask for a second.
I think, I mean, is the way.
Probably in the wrong, one, it's in the wrong spot, because this is communications between commission members.
Yeah, I think the last sentence is trying to refer specifically to communications that are happening via email essentially. But as written, it's just kind of floating there.
You should be able to refer to really what happens in a meeting.
So, so what do we, what do we want with this? We want to get done.
I think you could leave it there unless someone has a better place to put it.
Let's, let's request staff if they have a better place to put it, they can.
Well, so there's an item on each agenda called Commissioner comments, request referrals. So I, I think going with what Matt was saying, if you want something on the agenda, bring it up to the meeting at that time, gets added to the.
Exactly, the commissioner may request to have an item added to a future agenda.
So you're bringing it up at a public hearing, we're gonna put it on the agenda, goes on to it, that way we're not. Creating these agendas in secret and have some shadow document, docket.
I think it's fine, it's different than the way it has been.
Yeah, yeah, I put items on the agenda just to call Carl, and I realized maybe that's not right. Cause I thought it was important, but you're right, I think it is, I think we should bring it up to everybody.
Yeah, but if it comes up in between the two week period and three week period sometimes, then, then.
What about, say, if we put it up to the discretion of the, of the. Of the director, or, or maybe it is something that is, maybe it's the last minute, but it is something pertinent to be coming on that agenda.
I would say, we said, the chair, you know, could add it to the agenda, so a person could. I'll be the chair to add it, and he might say, no, we're not doing this, we'll wait.
Seems like we need this in a different section, and I don't know that the, the section exists about how the agenda gets made.
Speaking of, Steve, did you have anything to change on planning stuff?
I haven't. We're having a change. And, I mean, I thought there was nothing I would comment on. But the change. Changed that, but I doubt it, so. It's not something I really want to grow.
Okay. With, with that.
Can we do the voting thing that I was talking about though?
Extension.
Extension.
I don't know if it does it say anywhere, anywhere here, I'm gonna start with the.
I thought there was something about a yea or a nay.
Yes, it is.
I'm sorry.
It was stricken. Under six point one five. Six point one five motion making, page fifteen. At the end of the first paragraph, there was a. Couple sentences, after all interested commission members have had the opportunity to speak, the chair shall call for a vote, each member. Shall say a or nay motions, receiving a majority approval. Uh, we took that out and.
Right, that's been strict.
It just, well, it says it's stricken and then moved to six.
See section six point seventeen. Six seventeen.
I don't see it.
So each commission member shall respond in the affirmative or negative.
I see, so currently.
Where's that?
Page seven.
Well, no, it says page seven. Six point one seven. Does that address here?
Yeah, each commission shall respond, yeah, I, I don't see as that you have a chance for abstain.
Or conflict.
Why you're here.
Why?
Cause that's why we're here.
Always, you guys say you don't want to be locked in, my God, don't lock us in. I don't know, I'm just saying, there may be something. I just noticed that expertise thirteen point three, there is, um, there's language there about abstaining from voting stuff.
Well, that's because it'd be under the expertise, though, wouldn't that be?
Right, for expertise.
But otherwise you don't abstain.
Correct, if you don't have a conflict of interest or an expertise thing.
You need to be voted.
You should be voting a or nay.
Or you don't, or you don't come to the meeting. Is there anyone else that wants voting present? Sorry. We've reached the end, thank God. Where do we want to go from here, do we want to get the final draft and we want to?
Yeah, can we get a final draft?
We will get a, we have to get a final.
Bring it to the next meeting and go through it, like, one more time, sorry.
Can we vote on it in the next meeting, if we get the final draft two weeks?
We can. And I say, you, you do your due diligence, you read through it, if there's something that gives you real heartburn, you come forward. Bring motions in preparedness, say, I'd like this language either changed to this, or stricken, we're not going to have this. Large budgets, we're gonna try to follow. Our previous bylaws before we get the new bylaws.
Any disagreement or any additions needs to, you need to come with language and make a motion to include that language or straighten that language.
Yes.
From the draft.
No more concepts.
No more concepts, okay. That was agenda item D. We have no, nothing in public hearing items E, do have a department report under F.
I was gonna say, so, under D.
Under D.
You did not go back through the red lines.
I didn't.
Do you want to do that or not?
Do we want to, is there anything folks saw in the packet? From the first week that didn't jive with what we did? Okay, I'm not seeing, okay, look, we're gonna get a final.
Okay, well, you guys need to, for item C, under D two, it says schedule a time for formal action, so it has to be a minimum of two weeks. From the time that you get it, so. That's part of the department report is that there. Is a proposed, uh, joint work session with the BOCC for May tenth. So I think you guys need.
But that's not gonna.
It's not about bylaws.
No, it is not, but. But we're probably not gonna do bylaw stuff. Right, that's what I'm getting at, is you guys need to schedule a time for the formal action for the bylaws.
So the twenty fourth?
So we're not gonna have any time on the tenth, because that's.
Right, so the twenty fourth?
If that's, I mean, that's.
That'll be Carl's last meeting.
We're not there yet, but that makes sense, because they have to get us a draft anyway, even if they got it to us right now, it's still about two weeks, so. Twenty fourth.
Special meeting, it's up to you guys.
No, we'll get through it. May twenty fourth.
Twenty fourth is when we're gonna finish the bylaws.
We will vote on the bylaws.
But we'll have a draft in the next two weeks, week or so, right? Next two weeks.
Is that considered a hearing?
The final action.
The twenty fourth?
Yeah.
You, you mentioned one time that you wanted to have a hearing.
Yeah, the public can come in and put it. On their bylaws. I don't think we have to have.
They already did have a chance to input, right? Cause that, that could take.
It could take.
Carl, Carl was putting my life together two, three weeks ago, I was public input as well as commissioning.
Yeah, I think we, I, I really would love to have a meeting with Carl, present, to go over the bylaws, just to have his input. Which we're not gonna really have until the twenty fourth, which is the night we're supposed to vote on, because we have a scheduled meeting with the BOCC. I'm really, I'm ready to tell them, go pouncing, you know, cause I think Carl is more important, but.
Isn't a lot of the red line essentially Carl's input?
Yes.
He's the one that.
But we had a lot of discussion in. Where it was gonna come out.
Carl's the director and we're the planning commissioners.
Yeah, I think it's.
And do we know that the tenth will be a joint?
So, if you want me to go through the department's report, I can do that now. So I'll start from the top, so as far as projects go, uh, the BOCC approved proc, which was the event venue. As recommended by your commission. Uh, they also approved an application to remove a plaque note that was restricting the number of residential units on a lot. And then they approved, um, a vacation plat of a slide down road to vacate a portion of slide down road. Um, it is private on both sides. And then as far as the Board of Adjustments go, uh, BOA actions require three of three voting members, and we have not had a quorum for them, so we have not. Had BOA meetings for the last couple of months. Uh, District one is currently seated by Mike Twomley, he has remained on the board. Uh, District two was filled by Brett Hilling, but he did not reapply, and District three. Is filled with Mark Rover, but he's got some personal conflicts, so he has agreed to stay on until we can find some more members. But the Board of County Commissioners did add Ron Hayes. Um, as a member of the Board of Adjustments, and their intention is to add. More associate members so that we don't run into situation of not having a forum, um, to get applications heard. Uh, as far as the land use code, um. There are some sections that the board has required be added, so they wanted a forward added. You know, why do we have land use codes? Um, and then an executive summary upfront, so an overview of the LUC and the procedure, so like a flow chart. Just basically, you know, what the steps are for the processes. Um, and then with chapter two. They revised table two B, which is the land use matrix. They've got the allowed use, the limited use and conditional uses in there, uh, so the further definition of uses, they added. Number of rentable rooms versus various types of lodging. Uh, thresholds for schools, childcare centers and assembly centers. They did cemetery versus private burials. Uh, for kennels, they've added performance standards when it would be allowed versus a limited use if not. And then mobile home parks, uh, it has been changed to five versus the three, which, um, follows the state regulations as far as that goes. Um, events is still, uh, being discussed, it is a very heavy topic. Um, especially with proc going to the board, so they are looking at some performance standards when it would be allowed and not require a permit. Um, and they have reached out to some of the stakeholders for their inputs, but, um, I don't, we haven't come to like a decision on that yet. And then density was brought up, and that's to be determined, so. Chapter seven and eight is as far as the process goes. Uh, deleted the site plan review, which was the permitted use. So that all becomes limited use, so limited use process would be more like permitted use, which is ministerial versus discretionary. Meaning it would be approved if it meets the standards and criteria. Um, and then allowed would equal no site plan review. But still requires access address, septic, and whatever other permits would be needed if they were doing something else. Outside of the county. Um, and then for variances, they wanted to keep the findings per the twenty twenty one code, but define hardship. So that is something else that is being looked at. As far as the work sessions, we have one this Friday on the twenty eighth from one to three, um, with the Board of County Commissioners. Uh, they're gonna be continuing chapter two, and then they had. Talked about doing a joint BOCC PC work session, um, for May tenth at five thirty. Just to better suit your guys' schedules, um, but they're not sure if the LUC will be ready for that. However, uh, planning presentation by the capstone student on his final product, product for the housing. Might be ready, so the kickoff to consult preparing a housing strategy, so Carl has put that at tentatively the same time on May tenth. For five thirty, so those are both kind of up in the air at the moment. As far as that goes. And then as far as the letter that you all received in your email. Uh, Carl wanted me to let you guys know that starting June first, um, he will still be working for Delta County, just not as the director day to day. Uh, he will continue with projects like the land use code update, the housing strategy and the permit database. And he will retain access to email, have a space to work if needed, but generally will not be in the office. Uh, he can help answer questions, but Robbie will be the director to make official determinations and decisions as far as our department is.
So there is no new Carl?
Not right now, no.
Robbie.
I mean, Robbie is.
Well, I was gonna say, it's too bad that Carl. Is retiring his. Right here.
Party boy.
Um, you might not know this, Kate, but on the proc bill, was there any conditions on that? Other than what we did, or what you, you're doing that stuff, I like to hear the fruits of our labor or not labor, or whatever we're doing here.
There was conditions, um.
Any additional ones, or do you know that?
I mean.
Could we send those out?
I can send it out to you guys if you would like the resolution.
Like to know where we stand?
Sure. Is that, is your report? Thank you. Uh, we're almost there, item G, Commissioner comments, request referrals. Speaking of what we were talking about earlier, if you want to add something to the agenda, now would be a time.
I don't want to add some of the agenda, but this is a little time to talk, I do want to address. The letter that I sent out to all you a month ago, two weeks ago, regarding the things, Victoria, that you said on the record. And to give Victoria her due process, she was accused of misconduct and had to sit in front of the board. And, and state her case, and she has accused each and every one of us of misconduct on the record, and of intentionally breaking the law. And, um. I think of closed door meetings too, you use this of all that, and so my request is to have the county commissioners. Sit each one of us down to defend our actions that we've been accused of, uh, by Victoria on the record. And, uh, and yeah, you'll definitely have a chance to, to speak here, but, um, I absolutely refuse, as you said. Uh, and I would have, like to go on the record, in front of county commissioners to defend. The things you said about us, every one of us, and so my request is for the, that to be placed. On, on the, uh, agenda for the Board of County Commissioners.
On the BOCC agenda.
I don't know when they will do it, it'll, well, each have time to, will need to defend ourselves as she had to do when she was accused of misconduct. And she has in turn accused each one of us of that. And of intentionally breaking the law and of closed door meetings. And she has in turn accused each one of us of that and of intentionally breaking the law and of closed door meetings. And I, we, the proof is out there, so it'll be easy to defend against uh, your accusations. But I think we should have to go through the same process that that she did, called lies.
I really love that this topic got brought up. I think that um, we should start by saying. Now that we're talking about it and for our public, this is a public document that we're talking about. A four page complaint letter that was circulated among the commission with a do not forward label on it. Before it was sent to the entirety of us, which by definition is a closed door meeting. Um, I do think, in my opinion, when I have brought forth with my due diligence. That we were breaking the bylaws and not a single person stood to back me. And we all as a group decided to move forward on the application regardless of the laws that we may or may not be breaking. That was knowingly going against the laws that were in question. There was no, no discussion of and um, looking into it. There is none of that. I'm not here to make my case, I already did that. But the idea of everyone needs to be held at public hearing trial. Uh, for misconduct is a great thing. That's what I asked for multiple times. Now we have four commissioners that are asking for a formal investigation to be done. On the conduct of this commission for. I don't know why these gentlemen thought that my request uh, wasn't sufficient enough and it didn't get answered. So somehow their request was gonna be sufficient enough, but it wasn't. The commissioners never answered us. Um.
Who's us? You say us? I mean, who is us? Is that you or us?
On what?
What are you telling us? You said, never answered us. Who is representing us?
I never got, I never got an answer for my request for a formal investigation to be done. Wh- in which I actually provided a document to the B O C C full of links to our meetings and quotes that I, I consider inappropriate. Or misconduct. Um, so I never, I never got an answer on that.
I didn't see it.
Me neither.
I never got an answer on that. And by the other half of us, um, I believe it was you, Steve and Tate and Lane. That all signed a circulated email, um, going against.
Was it sent to you too?
Not until after it had been circulated around. Because I was informed.
Okay, so there's been a request.
Only, not to ask for comment, but only to see if anybody else wanted to sign a letter in support of the things that I was putting out there.
Okay, okay.
So there's been a request. I'm gonna bring it up to the B O C C. Sounds like a perfect time. We have a joint meeting. We'll hash it out there. If they, if they deem that necessary, if they wanna hash out other things, great, but. Um, do you wanna speak to, well, you want it, you want it on the agenda?
Well, these are serious allegations that she accused us of. Uh, and I'm talking about every one of us, uh, and I don't know if everybody got the letter I sent out. But uh, we were accused of breaking the law intentionally multiple times. We're accused of misconduct and of closed door meetings. And so uh, I think those things are easy to refute. Uh, I think we should all uh. You know, be offended by those accusations from, from somebody that just came onto this commission. And doesn't have a uh, history of understanding how this operation works. And so you came in hot with some accusations, fine, but we should have to defend ourselves. To my defense, Victoria, um.
Wait, wait, wait. You don't need to defend yourself to Victoria. You'll have that opportunity.
I'm just saying, I wanna state something. You say, and this is what I'm saying lies, you say that nobody stood up with you. We've got, we got an email five minutes before, my, my phone is off. So you gave, this was, you gave me no chance to stand up aside. So how am I supposed to help or when I don't even know what's going on? I feel like I was um, blindsided or maliciously. Uh, that was mischievous. I, the way you did it was, I feel was malicious. And I, I had no chance. I was blindsided. So, and then I've not got to talk or defend myself from your actions since. I'm not saying I was with you or against you, but I didn't know, I didn't get a chance.
I appreciate that. I remember you saying that.
Five minutes before, I worked for a living.
I know.
I shut my phone off out of respect for everybody else here. And five minutes does me no good. When you've been working on this for four days, eight days, I don't know. That, that was a, under the, I mean, for it to come in here and for me to work with you, which. That was under the blow, hit punch right off the bat. So that's what I'm trying to say. And that's my biggest point. That's my biggest form on the whole thing. And that's it.
Okay, well, I want you to understand, I went to Don Supas, I went to the county commissioners with all of that information. He told me he was gonna send it to the director, which then sent out that small portion of an email. That said, oh, there's been a concern raised about um, un, un uh, whatever residents on the commission. That's the only information that got relayed out of my entire pages and pages of information. Hours worth of con- conversation with Don telling him, hey, this is happening. I don't feel comfortable. This is what I found. And it was on, it was in the hearing. He, he acknowledges, yes, I spoke to you multiple times. He even says, um, I wasn't able to get a word in. That's kind of how I am. I'm working on it, but, but the point is, I understand that you feel blindsided. I, my information that I, and I'm coming in, this is my government that I'm sitting at right now. I felt wronged because in my discovery, nothing had been going by any set of laws. So these things that are gonna personally affect me that have been passed, did not come about with anyone following sets of laws that they should have been following. So I shared that information. It was misconstrued and almost um, answered in a legal way when it wasn't even supposed to be. And then sent out to everyone, which totally set the stage really wrong for me to bring any other information forth. And so, yes.
But I, all I'm saying is just because you were wrong, I don't appreciate turnaround and wronging me, right? I mean, five minutes, I have no, I mean, you're putting out accusations against me. And I had no, I couldn't stand up or I didn't even know what was going on. It was just like, it wasn't right. I don't know how you could say it's misconstrued. You just now said that nothing we had been doing was within the law. I mean, you make these vast blanket statements without being detailed about your statement. If you have an actual accusation, then put it in detail. Why you, you've, you've just accused us all of misconduct. And all of breaking the law intentionally multiple times. I mean, be specific if you've got something specific.
I feel like I have just in this, in the statement of, and I agree that you had not enough time to research to back it. But that's what I meant when I said they have committed willful misconduct is when I brought it forth. Hey, we're in violation of the law. I was even acknowledged that, yes, we are in violation of our bylaws in these ways. But that doesn't matter. We're gonna continue and we'll talk about it later.
The county attorney disagree with you. Does that make any difference?
Okay, what about Robert's rules?
I don't know.
Nobody was following parliamentary procedure. That's part of our.
The county attorney, you, you talked about as being corrupt, illegal. Uh, you wouldn't listen to anybody that night about the things you were talking about being on the agenda later. You would have none of that. Everybody tried to talk you down off the cliff, a complaint, because we weren't gonna address it. And, and then you got before the commissioners in the hearing. Later, I, I left by then, and you had just, you just told mistruths after mistruths.
And I don't believe that, but now that.
Well, yes, the county attorney.
We're gonna bring it here. We're not doing this here. Eight thirty.
By a member of, of illegal actions and misconduct.
Do you, do you have action? Do you have an action you'd like to put?
I would like to just have a chance to discuss it. I'm, I'm gaining ground here. We're supposed to work together, right? So obviously, uh, it's hard to work unless we can gain some ground here. We don't, we don't need the county commi- I don't need the county commissioners to hold my hand. To get what I have to say to this young lady out and let her say it to me.
Do you need the rest of the planning commission for it? You know, we're holding.
That's his request. It's not mine. I'm just trying to tell her that, you know, there's ways to do things and ways not to. And I, I can't, don't, don't spread lies about me personally. I can't talk about anybody else here. Cause there's some things that I may have agree with, but I don't know until, when they're presented five minutes before. We start laying the hammer down and then I, we've got a client up here that's, who's already been, you know, jerked around. We're trying to get him taken care of. We're looking like a bunch of fools. So I, I don't, I don't appreciate, you know. Putting us in that position. I think it's a low blow and I didn't like it. She knows now, you know now.
And, and in my fair defense, on at least that, the, I was told that they received pressure from. A majority of the planning mission members for this request of removal. So what am I supposed to think? What a majority, I've been told now that a majority of people requested this, and then the Quora Act, that wasn't true. So I'm in a position, I don't know which, who's, who's actually trying to follow the laws and who's working behind the scenes. I don't know.
Cindy.
Okay, so Victoria. I think. Instead of coming in, barreling in, I think had you had a chance to kind of learn about the individuals and how hard they worked. The amount of hours that TK just doesn't come to this particular planning commission. Goes to a lot of the board of county commissioners and other things. He educates himself to bring that value to us. He was extended in his position because we had nobody at that time that would step up. And we weren't blatantly trying to break laws or, or do anything like that. But when you come in storming and you're passing all the people, and if you just slow down and, and kind of get some information. We all should have one thing in common as a committee. And that is to have individual ideas, comments, solutions, recommendations for these applicants. That poor applicant that came in that night. Again, you're not gonna know this because you weren't part of the commission at that point. That poor man and, and to see his young son, see what he got to see. How much respect is he gonna have for government and how procedures. That guy got on, on two other meetings. And he shows up here again, and this whole thing, five minutes before you, you sent an email. None of us got a chance to even see what you were talking about, but that should have had a time and a place and a discussion. Not when an applicant is coming up and he wheels his chair up and says to the director, do I, do I just need to leave? I mean, how embarrassing that is. That kills our credibility. That should would be our first and foremost thing is we should be professional. We should be respectful to each other. We should be courteous. Steve and I have agreed to disagree. Sometimes I'll say something and I, I kind of think, I see his idea on some of it, but not all of it. But I don't lash out at him. I don't, I'm not unprofessional and I don't leave here mad at anybody. And I just think that being an associate first before you're a voting person, it was valued to me. I'm not gonna speak that way for everybody, but it gives me a chance to kind of learn the ropes and ask good questions. And let me tell you something, this planning uh, staff, their doors are open all the time. So when I need help and I, and they give you this bound book, you know what? It's your responsibility to read that book. But not just read it, but put those words into action and understanding. And you know how you do that? You spend some time with these people. You email them, you call them. They've never said, no Cindy, I don't have time for you. And I kind of ask the same question sometimes because I wanna get to know. It's our responsibility to go to those applicant addresses and learn about these things that we might see. Maybe there's a reason that we might need to have a sign put up or there, there might be impact on that road. Or those, how lights are gonna be seen coming down on those neighbors maybe late at night. That's our responsibility. We should not be handheld to say, hey, Victoria, I need to take you out or hey, Cindy, I need to take you out to the site. That's our responsibility. Cause when we're sitting here with this applicant, that's the time to bring questions and some additional discovery. But it's not the time to start platforming. Does that, that kind of makes sense? And I, and I'm not attacking you, please. I see, I see your demeanor right now. You're, you're just kind of relaxed. Exactly. I'm, I'm not attacking person. But I understand logic. I understand giving people psychological reciprocity, which means giving them the, the, the resilience. And the, and the efforts of the knowledge that they have, but I don't know everything. And so I lean to other people that do.
I wanna apologize for my approach. I know it was not appropriate, um, even better now than at the time. So don't construe that. I, I know that there was better approaches to be taken.
Yeah.
Um, I don't feel that. However, this is with everything that I was receiving on other ends, like I kind of touched on. And like in my first meeting when it was brought up, oh, hey, the voting is against the bylaws. I was just told, oh, that's fine. But it's not fine and we had to change it. So I felt like there was more of a behind the scenes than I was aware of. Because very quickly I got brushed over and so did Jacob. We brought that up. Hey, this is against the bylaws. Nobody cared. That, someone told us, oh, it's fine. We're gonna friendly amendment and then we moved past it. And therefore we're in violation of the bylaws, doing illegal things. So I do know that there were, uh, there's a better approach. And I apologize to all those.
Accusations. You, you, I mean, Tate made a good point. You made some very strong accusations. And when you do that, how people react is defensively, because reputation is very important to all of us. And so that's a, a normal reaction that a human being is gonna have is to be defensive, because you're attacking them. So I, I think that you have great ideas and I think that you can do great things. But it just takes some time of working with people. And, and I think that they have some good points about something. I mean, I watched you that night. You sat right next to me. And I'll tell you something, if I didn't know what you did for a living, you were professing yourself as an attorney, as, as stating facts. And to me, that, that's dangerous lines when we have a public here and you're coming across that way. And, and we had our attorney way in that is, is our sounding void as of our planning tradition. So I just think that those are accusations that I think people, it, it take it very personally and, and, and they wanna, they wanna be able to have that air cleared. Just as you did.
Cindy, can I elaborate on that?
Certainly.
She actually threw a bomb in the midst of a public hearing. And that was a legal. Bad deal, because that was a legal quasi judicial effort. And you paid no attention to that. You would not listen to anybody about what we were trying to get done. You just had your agenda. And I think your agenda is linked to the anti-county, anti-land use code people that's where you come from.
And that's an accusation.
Well, no, I just see your stuff on mine all the time.
No, and, and you saying that's where you come from.
It's clearly where you come from.
Of throwing accusations. I mean, you're throwing out accusations, lots more serious accusations, so.
Founded with, with.
There's no founding. There, there is, you've accused us of uh, you know.
I just would like, I would like us to talk with the board of county commissioners, have this investigation to talk about. I even told them, the rule of law in this country is that everyone gets the same laws put on them. So if I'm gonna be tried for, for misconduct, so should the rest of the. It was a public hearing.
Sure.
You know, okay, so for my charges of misconduct. And did, it was, it was held illegally and I'll start with that. They were supposed to give public hearing notice, which was not given. So from the very get go of this trial of this public hearing.
Take it up with the county.
And I did, and they didn't remove me. And this is what I'm saying, is that I requested just specifically for everyone. To be investigated for the claims that have been brought from the public, for myself to be looked into. They said, basically, no, we're not gonna do that. They said, you're gonna abide by the twenty twenty one L U C land code. That, that, that was my answer.
Can I stop this? I mean, with it, I don't think this is going anywhere.
He's requesting it.
And I think what people took offense to, Victoria, was what appears to be an assumption of a malicious intent. From the rest of the board for ignoring these things. And by accusing us of breaking the law, of willfully proceeding with meetings without paying attention to the law. I think the assumption then is that we are all.
Corrupt.
Corrupt, doing this with malicious intent to, towards some e- end that you don't agree with. And I think that whether that was your intent or not, that's how it came across. And that's what makes the rest of us feel like potentially we need to defend ourselves. I don't think anyone needs to continue defending ourselves to each other, but I think going forward. It's a matter of, can we assume in this room that all of our intention is to follow the law? All of our intention is to do right by the county. And if there's an issue that comes up, there's proper procedure in which to address it. And that it should be followed. And I think you feel that way, the same as the rest of us feel that way. And I don't think we need to go back and forth about who went what and what, who said what and how it was done. No one feels great about how, what happened. And I think we need to move forward in a way that assumes we're all trying to, to do, to do right by everyone else. And that if there's serious concerns that someone on the board is acting maliciously, is acting with bias. Is acting with conflict of interest, that needs to be brought up in a formal, appropriate manner. And the actions of the board, of the board of county commissioners, whether they've acted on your request, whether they've acted on Kate's request. Whether they responded, whether they did what? That's not our job. That's not our, in our control. And that's not really worth debating here. So I think Kate has made a request to put on the agenda of the O C C. That we, that they respond to both of your allegations and that that's the time. And that that's the time and the place to address those things.
Something I would just like to add real quick, if. If these types of allegations are gonna be made, I think you need to be really precise with your language. So tonight, again, you did it. You said every single one of the planning commissioners said that they didn't care. They knew they were breaking the law. They were gonna go board anyway. When what was exactly said in that meeting was that maybe we are going to consult our lawyer. Those are two completely separate statements.
That's not exactly what was said, but I agree with what you're saying.
We, we can go back to the.
It said, but we're going to continue anyway. And if someone wants to rescind this at a later date, we can.
Do you have anything to wrap us? I thought Kate wrapped us up pretty well. Do you have anything else to wrap us up?
Quite frankly, I'm asking you, Jacob. I think this needs to be done. I'm going against what Kate said. Cause this has been on my mind since it happened. It's either gonna happen here or it's gonna continue. I want to move forward. I think this is civil conversation. There are no way throwing punches here.
Sure.
If you want to leave, leave, I guess, but I want to get through where I can work with everybody here and feel good about it. I'm just getting some questions answered. I can go out in the parking lot and ask the same ones, but I don't see why we've got to run off. We spent enough time here and this is a big enough deal that I think everybody here should be able to get a little stuff, you know. Some off their chest and be able to go. I mean, I don't, I don't think I need to go have the B O C C. Uh have a meeting with me and all this. The deal is, I'm just trying to get through where she come from, where her accusations are from. And I feel like everybody here should be able to do it and do it right now. So.
There's a difference. Some of us want different things. Some of us want to move on. Some of us want to go to the B O C C. Some of us want to have a phone call.
But if you want us to talk, uh, you know, I'm still gonna talk. I want, I want.
So my question to Jacob, do you not take her accusation seriously?
Do I not take them seriously?
Do you, do you accept her accusation that that you backed it with misconduct? So, so you don't take her accusation seriously?
Not that I don't take them seriously, but I think she likes Cindy's. She came in with assumptions. We're also assuming that she's part of another group. You know, we're all assuming things.
But she's backing that up tonight. Continue.
Yes, I do think that's the problem is you. You just keep wanting to defend yourself. Just, just let us have our peace. Already wants to say his piece. Tate wants to say his piece.
Well, I was just agreeing with, because I mean, this is a four page letter that he sent with true, false. True, false, true, false. How um rude and demeaning is that to myself? He's correct every time. I'm false every time. He's correct every time. And then we have two other members sign it. That is super disrespectful. Um, I mean, I'm not maliciously attacking anyone. I want you all to know that. I did not come in this with the, in fact, I thought that when I, when I brought up that there were violations in the bylaws. That people were just gonna say, oh, is that right? I mean. Wh- what are you talking about? I thought same with today when I, when I emailed out the simplified procedure. I thought we were gonna go over it. I didn't think that it was gonna be a problem that it was kind of last minute. I thought we would just go over it. It was two pages.
And so it is history.
I mean, it's a couple hours. I'm sorry again, um.
In any case, the truth and the funny thing about truth and fiction is when it's on camera, it's easy to figure out. So I encourage you to go to those minute marks and see if the things that you said are true or if they're false. And they can be backed by the minute marks in the other hearing when TK was speaking. Uh and we can see and I transcribed it carefully because I wanted to be very accurate. And I think it would be harder to refute whether there's truth or false laid on to those uh exact descriptions that I put out there.
Like saying that I was completely malicious for saying closed door meetings because Steve Shrock said, we've already talked about this.
Okay, he said, she said, okay.
Exactly. But I just wanted to say that this was not malicious. It was not the intent to.
Where are we going? What do you, what do you, do you want, do you want action?
What, what's, what's anyone trying to do here?
Thank you. Do you want action? Do you want to vote?
I want some closure. That's all I'm looking for. I mean, and she's talking, she's getting across to me a lot of stuff. And I haven't been able to talk to her. I'm not gonna look.
Can I make a motion to end this meeting?
Yeah. Is there a second? There's a motion on the floor to end. Adjourn. Is there a second? I can just adjourn. Okay, we're done.